All right, we will call the City Council regular meeting agenda for August the 8th, 2022 to order at, what are we, 6:35? 6:34. With that, we'll move forward in our agenda to our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. If you don't mind standing with us, we'll have an invocation by Councilmember Cade, followed by the pledges to both of our flags by Member Berry.
Heavenly Father, thank you for your many and abundant blessings. We give you thanks for our first responders and ask that you protect each and every one of them. Thank you also for everyone gathered here today, for the residents and stakeholders here to speak and be involved in useful work for our city. I pray for our mayor, for all city officials, and in particular for the City Council. I humbly ask that you would grant us the wisdom to govern well, to address the true needs of the residents in the city, and to give us the ability to discern what is good for Pearland despite the conflicting issues of our times. And also, in everything, give us the desire to work together in harmony, even when we honestly disagree. I pray today that your will will be done through this meeting. Please give us assurance our decisions are pleasing to you and beneficial to our residents and our beloved city. In your blessed name, I pray. Amen.
Bless to the American flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
Honor of Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right, thank you for that. We will continue to move forward in our agenda. Roll call and certification of quorum. Madam Secretary, I'll certify we have a quorum and all members are present. So, thank you for that. Before we get to citizens' comments, just real quick, a couple of things from a housing standpoint or housekeeping standpoint. We've got several people who have signed up to speak tonight. We will call you up under the item in which you have selected. Try to keep some strict adherence to the three-minute rule. You'll give your name and address, and you'll see three minutes up on the boards as a gauge and a clock, so you can see that with the number of people to speak. That way, we can keep on task and on schedule for tonight. But before we do that, I do want to just remind everybody that we have a Little League team in Waco. And they will be playing for the opportunity to go to Williamsport in the Little League World Series tomorrow at noon. So, find a TV on ESPN. So, find a TV at home, somewhere else, wherever. Cheer these little guys on. They are pouring their hearts into not only baseball and having a good time, but for us and our community. They're playing for us. And they, at this age, have no clue how big this really is. They're just playing and having a good time. And it's fun to be around them. They have tons of energy. But as I understand it, I just found out that they'll be playing Oklahoma tomorrow at noon. Apparently, Oklahoma beat Texas West. Must've had a hangover from that 19-0 shellacking yesterday. And so, we'll wish those guys well and wish them on into the next piece. With that, we'll move to citizens' comments. I believe we have one for general comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Jimmy Davis, if you would come to the podium. Name, address, you have three minutes. And thank you for being here.
Jimmy Davis, 5004 Combsville Street, Pearland. Councilmembers, I want to thank the city for advising the public about the wastewater treatment plant violations. I appreciate Mr. Upton and staff taking time to provide a response to the questions I submitted, staff and council. In a follow-up email on July 25th, 10 business days ago, I inquired about the cost of remediation efforts for the JHEC overflow of 1.5 million gallons of untreated wastewater that poured onto the grounds and into the pond behind the facility that many wildlife call home, people fish in, and animals drink from. I've received no response. Were there no remediation efforts? I think as a resident who lives in the area, visits that pond, and has run on that track around it many times, I have a right to know. Also inquired about the entity that's operating the plants, since we don't have the personnel and their contract. Learned is a three-month contract with a cost of $49,900, just under the threshold that would require your approval and would have become public knowledge. How has that amount arrived at? That's a peculiar number if it was based on a cost analysis. It's $16,633.33 a month. Their contract expires in four days. Is it going to be extended? And for how long, if so? Also inquired about a cost analysis. How much are we paying Brazos River Authority to operate the plant versus what we were paying our own staff? Is it a cost savings? Should we consider having someone run our wastewater treatment plants? Second thing, I saw the recent post about the drainage problems at the new animal shelter and how they're moving all the animals back to the old one. I hope it'll be fixed promptly. And I hope, as a taxpayer, that I know the answer, but can we just get some assurance that whatever is going on with it, that it's not going to cost us more money? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I believe that was the only one for general comments. Everyone else signed up to speak to a specific item. So, with that, we will move to public hearing number one. Let's see, who's presenting that, John? Is that Mohammed?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Mohammed, if you would, read the purpose of the hearing and then move right into the staff report, followed by the applicant. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of City Council, good evening. So, the first request is a request by Jignesh Dursari, applicant, on behalf of Forgotten Angels Foundation, owner for approval of a zone change from Plan Development PD to Plan Development PD to accommodate two large lots for single-family homes and a detention and park reserve within the last section of the Belavita age-restricted community on approximately 3.1749 acres of land. And the general location is the southeast corner of South Rivera Circle and Berlino Drive. So, again, this is a request for a zone change to reactivate the PD designation for this 3.1749 acres of land within the southern portion of this Belavita Plant Unit Development. The applicant intends to develop or to build two large lot, single-family homes, and the balance of the land will be donated as a detention pond and a park reserve to the Belavita Homeowner Association. As you all know, Belavita, a green tea community, developed almost 20 years ago with the base zoning for residential R4 district. And due to the inactivity within these three acres of land, the PD had expired now, and approval must be obtained from the City Council. Staff has not received any, actually, staff received more than 30 letters of opposition for the request. Just going on a few exhibits here. This is the notification map, and as you can see, staff has sent the letter of the notice to almost the entire PD. Next slide is the original approval line, use plan for the Belavita PD from 20 years ago. Again, this is age-restricted community. The next slide is the amenity plan for the PD that was also approved with the original development. And this is the street network for the PD. This is an aerial map that shows the 3.17 acre land that's located on the southern portion of this Plant Unit Development. And this slide here shows how the applicant intends to divide these three acres as, again, two lots and restricted reserve for parking detention. A lot of this area is located within the floodway, a big portion of it also designated in the 100-year flood plain. These are a few views of the property, taken from just different angles. And you can see some of those existing homes that were built 20 years ago on both sides of the subject property. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing for this proposed zone change at their regular meeting on July 18. And there were many residents in opposition to the request and issues of concern, including the character of the proposed development, the size of the homes, and increased tax valuation for the existing homes, drainage, and flooding. Those are all among many things that were discussed at the meeting. A motion to approve the requested PD failed to pass by a vote of four, zero to four, and that can constitute a negative recommendation. And City Council will require a supermajority vote to pass this zone change. That concludes staff report. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may just add, so after the joint, or excuse me, after the public hearing at P&amp;Z and their consideration, and apparently the input from the community, the applicant had reached out to staff and discussed no longer moving forward with the original plan of the two lots and the reserve, but simply to request to bring the PD back to life under its original design and approval. And so, I do believe the applicant who is here will speak to that at their opportunity.
All right, thank you for that. Is Jignesh available, applicant? Oh, Ms. McGuire's here. Thank you for being here tonight, Renee.
Sorry, I had to leave. Senator Jignesh, we had COVID. I got COVID. That was the first day I got COVID. So, been there, done that, have a T-shirt. So, yeah, I was the original developer. 20 years ago, I was here, and of course, I think we had a lot more people objecting from green tea. We had most green tea out. But over a period of the next year, I guess, of going several times, I think either, you know, the City Council decided it was a good deal for the residents. And at one of the meetings, we've met several times with the Homeowners Association, and we requested, you know, there was an option to buy, just to buy it. And then, the most of the people seemed to think, we don't want a lot of stuff going on there. So, I said, well, maybe I'll just do two lots instead of six or seven lots. And they said, well, you know, everybody said, and Jignesh was there, how wonderful Belavita was, and how much they loved Belavita, and on and on and on, and what a great development was. And of course, I agree, it's one of my favorite. But I said, yes, but they'll all be at City Council and voting against it. So, we did meet with the Homeowner Association several times. They don't want anything built there, as usual. The legal description is 3.1 acres. There was a confusion there, but it's been set out. There was a complaint about calling it Section 6, which there's five sections that have already been built. One of the problems with building the last three acres is, towards the end of the project, I had 64 acres, which at a cost of about $1,005,005, I donated. And for some reason, that piece got left out. It was, a majority of it at the time was out of the floodplain, and most of it is where we're going to put the lots is out of the floodplain. It's not in the floodway. And it's, there's not any problems with flooding in the areas that I'm talking about, building the two lots on, or what ends up being the six lots, or whatever City Council wants me to do. Have plenty of room in the detention ponds downstream and upstream to add a ton of more detention. 64 acres takes a lot of water, but it takes it from Clear Lake, not from Belavita. There's really no drainage problems. It's never flooded. I'm not, no, no. The streets and the city knows this. The city knows this. There hasn't been one house in Belavita that has ever flooded.
Renee, hang on just a second.
Yeah.
A little housekeeping. This is a business meeting. We have an applicant giving a presentation. Right, wrong, or indifferent, she has a right to give her presentation. We will have an opportunity for people to speak for and against, and you'll have every opportunity to do that. So, please, let's keep the decorum. No calls from the floor, those types of things, and we can get through this meeting in the way it needs to be done. So, thank you. Renee, go ahead.
The 64 acres has flooded because it's open to Clear Creek, and it's very, very low. That's why it wasn't developed. The, one of the concerns was that it was going to do a Forgotten Angels house, because I did donate it to Forgotten Angels, because the money I was raising from it was going to go to build a multipurpose building for Forgotten Angels on the industrial tract. I have no, these angels cannot afford these kind of houses that are being built in here. And most of them don't live to 55 anyway. There are some parents that live in there, and I were very disappointed to hear people talk about not wanting those people in their neighborhood. And I know they're less than perfect, and I know people don't like to look at them. I have that problem in all the neighborhoods. And as Mr. Carrbone knows, it's, some of them are more difficult than others. Have no plans to build anything for Forgotten Angels in this area. I can legally buy a house and put angels in there, but I have no, want to do that. It's too expensive of houses. So, that's nothing that has ever been, you know, a part of what I was looking at doing. We want to try to keep, whatever many lots we do, whether it's two or six, one builder will build them all at the same time, so we'll have a less, a mess, less of a mess, and, you know, try to keep where the tenants, the homeowners can enjoy as much as possible. We went through five sections, and, you know, everybody put up a lot of stuff as we were doing that. So, we will monitor construction. There will be one developer. And that's, you know, we got to build something there. So, you know, I gave the opportunity of the Homeowner Association to purchase it, and that's not something that they're looking at doing. So, I appreciate your time, and I know you have a challenge. And, but then I know also that we have the right to build something on it. And so, I'm just asking to extend what's existing, the existing PD, so we can complete it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So, next, we're going to move to where we have people speak for and against. We do have several people who've actually signed up to speak. So, we're actually going to call those names out first. That way, we'll have some orderly movement to the podium. So, when your name is called, kindly step to the podium, give your name and address for the record. And as you see, we'll have a three-minute clock. You have three minutes to speak. Obviously, if we get moving through this, if people feel like that things have been said, you're not necessary to speak at this point in time. But with that, Mayor Protim, go ahead and start naming the first name.
All right. And these are in the order they're given to me. First up is Cynthia Purdy.
Hi. I did not expect to go first. I'm just going to let everybody else give the facts and figures and all that. I'm Cindy Purdy. Mayor, you, we've known each other a long time, just of flood issues from back on Pine Shadows. My address is 1254 North Rivera Circle, Pearland. We live on the other side of the neighborhood. And I was going to talk about emotions. I don't have all the stats. Everyone else will have the stats. I appreciate that. And about how great it is, the neighborhood. And Renee, I want to thank you for our nature reserve. We love it. In fact, I'm wearing a shirt for it now. The neighborhood is awesome, as she said. We're a very tight community. Everyone gets along. Everyone is uniform. I was originally going to talk about the large houses, but if we're talking about just building, my concern is the flooding, the loss of habitat, and the retention pond, as it would affect the habitat and, again, the flooding. I happen to live, we moved in in 19, and we happened to live across the creek for almost 20 years. So, we saw all the flooding from the other side of the creek. And you couldn't cross, I don't know if any of you guys went over there during Harvey, but you couldn't cross Yost Bridge. Because the oxbows that are in that low land that is now the reserve, those fill up like a bathtub. That is the drainage, part of the drainage plan for the neighborhood. It's actually higher than the creek, though it does protect the creek, but it also protects the homes. During the big floods, and it's, I think, 19, we had another flood as well, those totally fill up. And the land there, the use now is, it absorbs the water. We have all kinds of animals living in there. We have bald eagles that fly over. We have hawks that fly over that are there. We have people from across the nation that have heard of our neighborhood because of the birders. They come in. It's a real established habitat, and my concern is losing any of that. Also, losing the retention from the land itself. As you know, much more development has happened in the last 12 years. The other side of green tea has now been leveled. We have very little wild space left in Pearland. And this is pristine, and we are so proud of it, and we love it so much. And my concern is that we have the opportunity to, if she would give it to us, that would be awesome, to protect the land that's there, protect the wildlife that's there, protect the habitat that's there. And the idea of losing any of it is devastating to me and to the neighbors, because, like I said, the green tea, so much of that so much of that land has been developed now. That was all open, wild and retaining. That's north of us, you know, that's up water from us, down water, whichever way that, so we don't know what the next flood is going to look like because of how much construction is going on further upstream from us. They're going to make construction on Pearland Parkway, commercial, that's all. They've built in new retail strip centers. So it's, you know, saying it hasn't flooded in the past has nothing to do with now. Yost never flooded either until the church built the retention pond. And now you'll see when it's a hard rain, Yost will have water on it because the retention pond's not working. So anyway, we appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Let's see. Next up, Carol Dyson.
I thank you for your time today. I ask the city of Pearland to please deny this request.
Ms. Dyson, if we could get your address just for the
I'm sorry. 1502 North Primavera. I am concerned about our safety. When the building was being conducted in the years past, the contractors, the cement trucks, all the heavy equipment that would come in there did a great deal of damage to our streets. We're still working on trying to clean that up. The development company did not repair any of the damages that they did to our streets, our curbs, or anything else. They parked on our yards. They parked on our grass. They didn't consider that we were a neighborhood and we were proud of what we had. The construction on this proposed property would surely result in flood conditions for all the nearby homes. This development company cannot guarantee that there will be no flooding. And because of that, we have to look at higher flood rate, insurance premiums, damage to our homes and the, and the trauma of having to get it repaired when we are all reaching our golden age. Building oversized houses on oversized lots would result in increased property taxes. All of the property owners in Belavita are over 55 and most of them are retired and most are now living on fixed incomes. Increasing our tax liability personally would increase our HOA, and our increased HOA fees would create an even greater financial hardship. In the past, when we had construction going on in our neighborhood, the contractors, their people, they slept in their cars in our neighborhood overnight. We had to call the police many times. They cannot guarantee, this, this development company cannot guarantee our personal safety or the safety of our property. I think it would be a very destructive thing to have this new construction in our neighborhood for two houses that will not contribute to the financial health of our HOA treasury. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Next up, Ms. Carolyn Beeson. There she comes.
Carolyn Beeson, 2516 South Venice, resident of Belavita for 11 years. I'm going to repeat some of this in a different way. Imagine that you're in your 70s. You spent your life saving your money. You're ready to retire. You're living on a fixed income with a little bit of savings. But, you know, the worst depression in 14 years is going on right now. Inflation is high. And your house and your housing and your association dues will surely go up in a subdivision that's been there for 20 years. And the cost of maintenance and repair is escalating. This is a situation for all of us. But for seven, some residents, imagine that the land that you live on, it was promised to you that there would be no more building. And yet there has been building. It's a wetlands area and the proposal is to raise the ground level behind your house five feet. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out what that's going to do. That water has to go somewhere. If we want to build, why don't we put the detention pond behind those seven houses? And let Renee build out there in the swamp area? I mean, that makes sense to me. That's where all the water is. Put the, put the detention where it needs to be. I have seen two houses during Harvey in that area whose water has been right up to their foundation. Only the grace of God has saved them. Now imagine you're one of us. What would you do? Hopefully you'll abide by the prayer that you made earlier, that you will do what is best by the community. And we are your community and would welcome your vote in favor of defeating this measure.
Thank you for those comments. Next up, Marion McKernan. There she is.
My name is Marion McKernan. I live at 2321 South Lego Vista Drive, Pearland, Texas. I think by just looking at all these people that say no, that should tell you something. Are we all against something that's supposed to be good for us? Or are we all against something that's not good for us? Please look at all these people. The Planning and Zoning Commission has denied the application for Forgotten Angels Foundation rezoning this track in Belavita. I'm a property owner. I've lived in Belavita for the last 17 years. I am here as a resident of Belavita, asking you to honor and support the Planning and Zoning Commission's decisions and deny this request. Many people will give you many reasons why not, but just look around. Here's your reason why not. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Next up, Don Smith.
My name is Don Smith. I live at 1502 South Primavera. I'm the president of the Belavita HOA, but I'm speaking to you as a, as a resident so that all the other residents that want to speak can speak. I think I heard earlier by the applicant, there's been a late 11th hour switch from rezoning to a PD. And I just wanted to add that we would expect that the PD renewal process would go through the city channels, processes, whatever it takes to get to that point. And we would have an equal opportunity during that process to challenge if we so deem it necessary. Last month, the Forgotten Angels Foundation request for rezoning was unanimously denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Today, the applicant is asking the council to overturn this unanimous decision and to deny the will of the Belavita residents as part of the process. In their application, the applicant states, quote, "The homes to be built will be custom homes with at least 3,000 square feet of livable area. It is our intent to develop only two large sized lots, which will have a huge appeal to the marketplace," end quote. The two large sized lots the applicant proposes to develop actually will be three times and two and a half times the typical sized lots of Belavita. The applicant states the homes will be a minimum of 3,000 square feet, but does not state the maximum square footage. The huge appeal referred to by the applicant may apply to the buyers, but not to the nearby current residents or to the Belavita as a whole. These disproportionately large lots and homes will create increased county appraisal values for the current homeowners, which will result in increased taxes, homeowners insurance, and flood insurance, et cetera. Many of the current homeowners are on fixed income. They're in their 70s, 80s, 90s. For some, the increased costs will literally jeopardize their ability to continue living in Belavita. Their application also states, quote, "We are planning to donate approximately two acres to the Belavita HOA, which will include provision for a new detention pond that meets the needs of this section," end quote. This represents the applicant's subjective view of what they may desire, but does not reflect the views of the HOA. The HOA must decide if they desire to take on the cost, care, maintenance of a detention pond in perpetuity for the purpose of enabling the development of two homes. With all due respect to the applicant, it seems the HOA is being asked to provide a major contribution to development of the two homes with many unknowns. Their application also states, quote, "We feel very good," pardon me, "we feel very proud of adding this value to the city of Pearland," end quote. Although the development of the two homes will add minimal value to the city of Pearland in terms of tax revenue, the homes will add little, if any, value to Belavita. These disproportionately large homes and lots will create a significant increase in the impervious surface, causing water flow and drainage issues in the highly flood-prone area. One of the lots is fully within the flood plain and 50% within the flood zone. Development of this property will significantly increase the probability of flooding to the surrounding area and nearby homes. The council's much-needed drainage bond program and the city's rezon philosophy must align to have credibility with voters. In this case, alignment would mean that the rezoning of this property would be in conflict with the vision and goals of the drainage bond program due to the increased probability of flooding and drainage issues. I respectfully ask the council to deny the applicant's request for rezoning as it was unanimously denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Thank you for those comments. Next up, Connie Harry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Obviously, my prepared remarks tonight were to address the issue of two oversized lots. But it appears from Ms. McGuire that that plan has changed. Obviously, we had no previous notice of that. However, the same circumstances exist with the proposal of seven or eight houses, perhaps even exacerbated by the two homes that she was proposing. One of the lots that she was proposing is completely in the flood plain, which is shown as Lot Two on the drawing up there. The other lots, one, where she is proposing five to six homes, was more than 80% covered by floodwaters during Harvey. My husband and I lived at 2504 South Venice Drive. During Harvey, we watched the water crest out of Clear Creek, over the guardrails on the bridge on Yost Road, completely fill the detention pond behind our house and come within 18 inches of our back fence. We saw airboats bring people from the green tea area and deliver them to the opposite side of the bridge because apparently they were flooded in. Obviously, we hope that this never happens again in our lifetime, but we have no way of guaranteeing that. The owner's application originally stated that this development had been delayed because of prior flooding. In fact, it's been delayed for 20 years. That's no one's fault. It just happens to be the lay of the land. They've also been paying taxes on diminished value of $38,000 for this property. Again, that's no one's fault. That's just previous flooding as determined by HCAD and as presented by the developer at that time. I was prepared to speak about the value to Belavita that might be contributed by two homes. Obviously, that's a moot point if she goes back to the PD that she's currently talking about. However, there is still a concern about where the detention is going to be. If she talks about seven homes, eight homes, that our lake would be affected by this, our nature reserve would be affected by this, that water has got to go someplace. And if you build that Lot One area up, which if you were to go out and actually look at it, it's going to have to be built up four or five feet, that water's going to be pushed someplace. And we all know, just, you know, simple physics, it's going to go down from there. Belavita is a wonderful place to live. If you just look around here, you can see that we all love our homes and we thank the developer for this. But the community of Belavita is about the people who live there. It's not the homes that were constructed there. We were given the opportunity to live here. But this room depicts to you that we are an active, over 55 community, active socially and civically. We are a large voting population. We support the council. We support the city. And our goal is to maintain the integrity of Belavita, strive to ensure that there's no development that's made that adversely affects our homes or negatively impacts the flooding issue. Just a few months ago, we were in this same room talking about the possibility of implementing a drainage fee.
Are you, are you getting close to the end of your
I'm, one more second. Okay. That plan was abandoned and it's my understanding now that there's a $150 million, million dollar bond proposal to mitigate the flooding, which includes Belavita. The proposal for this development is the poster child of why you do not build in a known flood area. So why are we even considering this?
Thank you for those comments. Next up, David Robson.
My name is David Robson, 2433 Amino Drive. That, in case you don't know, is the last house. And in the, in the hurricane, I walked to the middle of the, to the street. And it was 37 inches high and it was still coming down. Fortunately, thank God, didn't get, did not get water in, in my house. But when I, when I left, I went to, I walked to the bridge. That was more than 37 feet, 37 inches to walk over so my daughter could get me and take me to their house. And I don't, I don't like that. I don't like that at all. It just shows that, that we're not doing the right thing. There's wonderful people that are here. I, I see a good number of them and I just, we need, I, I hope and pray that when you decide what you decide to do, remember there's a lot of people here. And I know that there, there's some little things you don't know. My flood was, I think, right at 400 miles, $400. Today, it's 776 for flood. And my house went up by about, well, I thought part of it. And, but my house went from where it was and my house went from where it was, and it jumped up about 7,000 more. And, you know, when I came here, I had no job, I still don't have a job, and the one thing that I know is, God bless me, I'll be 80 in April, and just put yourself in how these people feel. It is their neighborhood, it is my neighborhood, and just remember, if someone were to come to you and say, "We're going to do this," you know, just all I know is that, please try and put yourself inside like us. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you for those comments. Next up, Linda Kuhn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, City Councilman, we appreciate your time. I want to make sure everybody's very clear, if no one from Belavita says this today, this is not a referendum about Forgotten Angels, and it's not a referendum about Renee West. Obviously, a wonderful developer, she's built numerous beautiful communities, we all love your homes, and again, like Ms. Purdy said, thank you for the nature reserve, it's beautiful, you've done a wonderful job. So I want to make sure that gets said, because we care for Ms. West, and we've had a very close relationship with her. All right, back to the business of why we're here today.
If we can start with your name and address for the...
Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Linda Kuhn, I thought when you read that. My address is 2214 West Marsala. So, obviously, she builds a good home. Look at this community, look at this community turnout, I'm very proud of you all, I want to take that second, I'm very proud of all of you. This is a senior community that's managed to get out of their homes and come here to tell you, this is a warning to you, they're trying to warn you and trying to talk to you, because we went through Harvey, we went through Tax Day, and while there was technically no encroachment into anyone's home, it was lapping at the back doors. Now, this property, there's no good guy and there's no bad guy here. When Ms. West did the original PUD for this, it was 2001, we didn't even think about the flood plain, you know, and so it was originally envisioned that there would be eight homes and two other on the other side. In the world post-Harvey, post-Tax Day, post-Atlas 14, we have a very different world and climate that we live in for development.
Pause the clock, Joe.
It's a very different climate that we live in, and this particular land, there's no good guy, there's no bad guy. It's not our fault, it's not her fault, this land, the topography is too low. It is 50% within the floodway, and it is almost 100%, it's like 90% in the flood plain. Everything south of the Bellino Street is in the floodway. Under Harris County, flood control rules, you cannot fill in. So Lot Number Two, on the bottom, it can't be built because it's in the floodway. And so what we want, and we've told you, you know, what we don't want, but let me tell you what we do want, we want clear title on our property. Forgotten Angels came to you guys with an application and showed a 2019 deed that said they own 3.6 acres, when in fact, they do not. We have run a title report, got it right here, have given it to you guys, we have told Ms. West, they do not own 3.6 acres, they own 3.1749 acres. We have asked for a corrected deed, they have refused to give us one. This is a legal issue City Council doesn't want to get in the middle of. We have asked, and they have refused to give it, I have to ask, why? Why? So some other people have mentioned that all this, for two homes, we are 99% built out, and now she wants to come back again. When she came back before, we didn't complain, when she came in 2014 and built again, we didn't complain. Now we're telling you where she wants to build is too low, and it is going to flood or it's going to cause flooding of the adjacent homes. I see my time has run out, thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you for those comments.
My name is Gwen Imhoff, I live at 1407 North Marsala Drive. Belavita is actually 21 years old. My husband and I bought our home in Belavita on June 21, 2001. When we bought our home, we understood that the current community would remain as originally presented, and that is why we bought our home in Belavita. I'm not going to address the flooding because there's so many people doing that, or our streets being torn up, which is a huge issue, but I do want to talk about the residents of Belavita, we do not want our property values to increase due to building homes inconsistent with current property values. My husband died on April 26 this year, he left me in an affordable, safe community. If I can no longer afford to live in this community in Belavita, does Pearland have another place for me to live? And I have one more question, does Pearland still have a mission to contribute to a safe
Thank you for those comments.
Good evening, my name is Tom Hayden, I live at 1401 East Marsala Court. I bought the sixth house that sold in Belavita. I have a totally different perspective on this problem than everybody else has mentioned. When this subdivision was built, it provides amenities to people over 55 for a low maintenance lifestyle. These amenities are not cheap. We pay over $3,000 a year in homeowner maintenance fees per home. By taking the current proposal, we would lose $10,000 a year of homeowner fees. The fees, when they, the cost when they were, when the original subdivision was created, a decision was made that the equitable distribution of the cost would be to the lots sold. Therefore, if you take five and make them two, that's a reduction of $10,000 per year for every year the subdivision would exist in perpetuity. Now, when the subdivision put gates on the community, we also assumed responsibility for other things, like all the streets, all the streetlights, the lift stations, the sewer lift stations, all the buildings on the facilities, things, a lot of things the city makes up, provide for other communities, we are a private, a private community totally, especially things like street maintenance. We've got big costs coming in the future because it's impossible for the roads not to erode, but we're going to need all the stuff, all the costs we can get, or the revenue we can get from these homeowners' fees. So that's my position, approving this change would negatively impact the neighborhood and provide a preferential rate to people living in these homes.
Thank you for those comments. Next up, Linda Aaron.
Members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, residents of Belavita, my name is Linda Aaron, I live at 1510 South Primavera Drive. My fence borders the area to be rezoned, as does several of my neighbors, plus the wall lot reserve. Twenty years ago, Renee West Maguire developed Belavita. We, the homeowners, are very proud of our community, and Renee West Maguire is responsible for Belavita's very foundation. We realize without her planning, Belavita would not be the community that we are today. There are 618 houses in Belavita. While we're the two, or the six, or the 13, this number seems to vary a lot, not built when the housing development was being built out. From my understanding, this area was never even plotted to show any houses to be built. I suspect this area was likely to flood because of the lay of the land. What has changed? I understand Renee West Maguire plans to add a retention pond to this area. A retention pond requires maintenance. Who will be responsible? Renee West Maguire? The new homeowner, perhaps? No, it will raise our homeowners' association dues. During Harvey, water came within inches, not feet, inches, of flooding several of our homes. Some of our homes took water in the garage. We believe the changes Renee West Maguire wants to make to Belavita will flood our homes when flooding of this kind happens again. The area Renee West Maguire wishes to further develop must be raised because of the lay of the earth. This raising of the earth will send flooding water out into our streets. Several of our homes are sitting directly in that path. I would like to invite the City Council of Pearland to come to Belavita and really look at the area to be rezoned. I would also like to invite you to come to one of our get-togethers at our clubhouse, meet some of us under better circumstances. Renee West Maguire is asking you to approve a zone change that will make for flooding risk for our homes and property. I can assure you that you would not want this zoning change and these risks taken with your family's homes and property.
Got a couple of questions for just people in the audience real quick. How many people are here that are not here for the Belavita reading currently? Show of hands, we've got one there, a couple there. Staff, do we have any staff? And the reason I'm saying this is, we are slightly over capacity, or the fire marshal in our room, okay? Not by much, but slightly, and so fire marshal's not allowing anybody else into the chambers right now, so I'm going to request, if you've got an item that's on the agenda a little bit later, if you could step out into the lobby, that would greatly help. I think we have, for your listening pleasure, I think you can listen in while you're out there, and same thing, if we've got a staff member of three, if they can head to another room, that would be fine, and we would make sure that we're compliant. After all, we need to be compliant with our own rules and regulations. We're cranking down the AC to make sure it's as pleasant as possible in here. We certainly, you know, are glad everybody is out tonight, but I want to make sure that we're all safe as well. With that, Mayor Proton. Thank you, Mayor. Next up, Alan Bryant.
Hello, Mayor and Council, my name is Alan Bryant, 2409 East Tushman Drive. A lot of the points I was going to make have already been made, I'll just reiterate, I guess. Really, it's been a little bit hard to form an opinion with kind of limited information. I came to the zoning meeting to find out more and saw the plan that's on the board now with the two large homes. So some of my concerns are about increased costs as far as living there. We just moved here a year ago, and already Harris County has seen fit to, Ellisire House is worth 428,000, and these two properties are 50% bigger than mine. So at the last meeting, they said these were probably worth 450, I'm thinking they're probably more 600 or 700. So two, three-quarter of a million dollar homes is bound to raise all of our property values for tax purposes. And of course, the added infrastructure of the pond and whatever else it takes to accommodate more properties will probably raise all of our association dues because of the increased expense to the HOA. And then finally, of course, the potential for increasing our flood insurance costs if indeed the added properties change the zoning for property, for flood insurance. So anyway, we've enjoyed our first year at Belavita, it is a wonderful place, and happy to be part of this community, so I just thought I'd give you my concerns about what little I've been able to figure out about the plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Next up, Neil Wallach.
Good evening, my name is Neil Wallach, I live at 1638 South Primavera Drive, Pearland, and been a resident of Belavita for the last several years since we evacuated League City from Hurricane Harvey. We had three and a half feet of water in our house, and that was not a senior community. We had five minutes to get out of the house, pack our animals up, we had some cats that, some rescue cats that we were taking care of during the storm, not expecting our house to flood, and two of the animals stayed over, so we went out by boat, we went to the Bay Area Christian Center on 518, slept overnight there, and were told the following morning that the army trucks would come and take us to Galveston, where we'd be transported to Dallas, with no idea that we might be there for a month, we couldn't bring our pets. We were lucky that my wife was a member of animal rescue in League City, and fortunately, a woman who she was friends with came and took us home. We were not allowed to walk on the streets, and I just wanted to share some experiences with you in that regard. When we, we had a rental home in Belavita that we intended to move as a senior community. Once we retired, we were forced out of our home, I spent 10 months trying to rebuild the home. We were told by Lennar Homes Village that developed the park on Clear Creek, that there's no problems there. We were told when we bought Belavita, there's no problems with flooding there, and that could not be further from the truth. Even we had a village home in Kingwood that flooded, which was one story. After we left and had six feet of water, I'm thinking, talking for everyone in this audience, and all the widows and senior people and people that can't take care of themselves, what's involved? Most of the homes, the vast majority, are single-story homes that will flood, and it's an unbelievable experience, I don't know how many people have tried to rebuild homes, we lost both cars, we had to beg my sister to borrow a car so we could go and get the only car that was available on the Honda lot, all the dealers were closed, but I asked when emergency management meeting, what would we do? Well, we called 911. Does the city have a plan for all these senior citizens of how to get them out safely? The roads will be closed, the bridge has been closed. Several times, it was flooding, just recently, you know, that several homes along the bank flooded. Do you expect the seniors to climb up, pull down ladder in the attic, and crawl in the attic and sit there while you all try... attic and sit there while y'all try to rescue these people? Is the land floods? My next-door neighbor wrote comments saying that she was there, and the only reason that it didn't flood was the property was retention, was a retention area to collect water, and that prevented the whole streets from being flooded. I took a print off the website of how close the subject property is to Clear Creek. I don't think the maps adequately show that. It's right on there, and it's, this would be a travesty. We don't want to be like Eastern Kentucky where we have all these missing people that can't be accounted for. I don't think-
Are you wrapping up your comments? Are you wrapping up your comments?
Yeah, I'm going to wrap them up. So, I would hope that the judgment of our council would see the importance of protecting the community and trying to make sure that this doesn't happen to the people in our valuable community that the mayor, Tom Reed, came to several times and celebrated how wonderful the community it was in his honor. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. And last but not least, signed up was Ms. Betty Otish.
My name is Betty Otish. I live in 1609 South Lago Vista. Officially today, I qualify to live in Belavita. I've been there for seven years, and I, when I moved there, I don't have any kids. A lot of you know that. I don't have any brothers, sisters. I don't have my parents. And Paul, being older than me, was concerned of where I was going to go. So, we looked at Belavita as an investment and decided we're going to go where I'm going to feel safe. If something happens to him, I want to feel safe. I want to feel that I'm in a place where I feel comfortable. And you will say that out of everybody here, I will be the future of Belavita. So, I want to protect my investment. Everything pretty much has been said. I want to take the feeling out of it because my concern has always been coming to city council, concern about seniors and low housing income in Pearland. When someone lives in a fixed income, when the flooding and all the drainage issues were coming up, the water billing, my concern was, how will someone, if they raise and the water billing a fee, how will it affect my community? This community here, whoever you see here, they are what I would consider my parents, my aunts, my uncles, my grandparents. These people are my family. And what upsets me is that there's at least a third of them that are single, fixed-income seniors that will be affected by raising taxes. When the property assessed value goes up, the property goes up, they can't afford it. My next-door neighbor is a retired teacher. She lost her husband about four years ago. I will hate to lose Martha. Martha is my next-door neighbor, and we share cookies, we share Christmas. I see their grandkids, they're my little grandkids. I don't have any kids. So, anytime that you have a community as tight as Belavita being affected because of the fixed income, regardless of how much those homes are, it could be one, two, or six that are built, the Corps of Engineers that Renee used were wonderful. They did a wonderful job. But that was 20 years ago. The roads, like a lot of them said, are getting old, and I'm looking into my HOA fees going up to protect my investment. I'm concerned that any trucks coming in will affect my investment because that means that my HOA fees will go up, my taxes will go up, everything will go up. So, right now, I'm okay. But, if I look at my investment 20 years from now, I might not be able to afford to live there either. So, I appreciate all of you taking the time to listen to the concerns of the community because it is a community. And I want to make sure that Renee knows that she is welcome to live in our community too and enjoy what we have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that. So obviously, this is a doctored public hearing, and so those were the people who had actually signed up to speak. The public hearing is open to the public to speak. So I'm going to make a call for anyone else in the audience that would like to register a comment for or against this proposed request. Can go to the podium, give your name and address. Yes, sir. Name and address for the record and three minutes to speak.
Okay. My name is Mike Fortier. I live at 2406 Modena Court. I've heard what everyone has said, and I'm pretty much in agreement. But I guess what I focus in on is, when the development was first put together by Ms. West, there was Articles of Incorporation through the Villed Masters, Articles of Incorporation that basically governed all three communities. And if you read those Articles of Incorporation, they're fairly clear. No group homes, no Airbnbs, no businesses. Additional that on the Articles of Incorporation, they were very clear. Lots were to be 50 feet, single-family, garages facing front. And what was stated in that Articles of Incorporation, basically, when she sold the lots to the builders, the builders conveyed to all of us as homebuyers that we were moving into a community that was regulated by the Articles of Incorporation that stated that the lots were going to be 50 feet, the homes were going to be approximately 30 feet, 35 feet wide, and now all of a sudden, that we're all living in there, Ms. West wants to come in and change the requirements of the Articles of Incorporation. There's not supposed to be group homes or any businesses of any sort in the community, and all of a sudden now, there's a potential for us to have group homes? She's talking about enlarging the lot size, and now I guess we're not going to do that. But my concern is that, look, the Articles of Incorporation was written to govern the community, and as such, we need to stick with those. That was conveyed when she sold the lot to the builders, and the builders conveyed that message to all of us as homeowners that we were going to be living in an over-55 community, 50-foot-wide lots, 35-wide homes, and that's pretty much what we expect. We're all living there, and now all of a sudden, it's like, whoops, no, we're not going to do that. We're going to change the rules. And so, therefore, I ask the council members to deny Mrs. West's request. That's it.
Thank you for that. Anyone else that'd like to speak for or against this proposed request? Looks like we've got a taker. That's fine.
If those of you who have not signed up to speak, if you would just fill out the form after you speak so that we can be sure to track it.
You'll fill out the form afterwards and turn that in, just so we have, make sure we tie your name and address together for the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Crystal Price. I live at 1601 North Lago Vista Court. I attended the Planning and Zoning Committee on July the 28th, and I just want, there was a statement made by the representative of Forgotten Angels, and this is a statement that was made. After all the residents got up and made their opposition, then this person, this guy, got up and this is what he said. He stated that six or eight homes would cause more chance of flooding, whereas two homes, less flooding. So, they're admitting they know that if they do build six or eight or two, that there's going to be flooding.
Thank you for that. And then I'll just make the last and final call, those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request. Go to the podium. Seeing none moving in that direction, we'll move to city council. Opportunity for city council to ask questions, comments, and concerns, that portion of our public hearing. So we'll start. Anybody have a question, comment, or concern? Member Coza?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out this evening. Some of y'all I know personally. I currently live in Green Tea, and when Belavita was being built, we had similar situations as Mrs. McGuire stated. There was a lot of concern in our neighborhood about what y'all's neighborhood was going to do to ours. With that being said, I was of the mindset that basically, the folks that owned it prior to y'all were notorious about putting in apartment complexes. And I said, having a development behind us was much better than any other type thing that might come in otherwise. My neighbors, I'm 55 years old, I have 70 and 80-year-old neighbors immediately next to me and across the street from me. They had very similar concerns that y'all had. We had one demand as far as where I live in Green Tea, that we didn't want through traffic that Scarsdale was going to have. At the time, we had approximately 8,000 people drive down Green Tea Drive every day. With that being said, the children from Green Tea, lots that y'all live on today, a lot played in the woods that were there before y'all came into town. So with that being said, I understand your concerns. I understand what your problems are with flooding and stuff like that. My thought is, could there be a, I don't know, some type of medium between Mrs. McGuire, Belavita, possibly the city helping out? I know y'all had talked about being able to purchase the land, and y'all were unable to come up with any type of agreement between the two. But as far as tonight, what I've heard is, y'all don't want development right there in these one-acre area as far as that goes. When the development was proposed, as you've seen in the packet, there were eight homes that were slotted for this area. With the current conditions that we're in, with the flooding that's been there, I think it would probably be less. I don't know that. Wouldn't know that till we went through this whole process of allowing the property to be developed. But my thoughts on it are, I think there might be some type of different avenue between development or reduced development to be able to work with that. And I would personally like more time to be able to look at that avenue and not, you know, make a hard, cold decision this evening as far as that goes. I would like to be able to work with the city, with the developer, with the HOA, and see if there is a possibility to be able to do something that might benefit everybody and we come out with something that might be a little bit different than what we're discussing tonight. So, that would be my decision that I would like to see as a possibility.
Any other questions, comments? Member Kamkar?
First of all, thank you to the folks of Belavita for coming out today. I know you've got a lot better places to be than here. It's unbearably hot up here, and I think everybody's a little warm. But y'all are out here for like a very important reason. There's something going on in the community that you have great concern about. We've had, was it 15 or 16 different folks show up and publicly speak, which is not something a lot of people like to do. But the same story we hear over and over and over is that they have concern that they're going to be taxed out of their homes. They have concern that they're going to be stuck with the maintenance cost. We have concerns that their taxes will go up because a massive, out-of-character house will come into play, and our good friends at Harris County Appraisal District will punish everybody here. And I think we've all been punished, to be honest with you. COVID was not fun, and now we're dealing with the highest inflation in 50 years. We're dealing with some of the worst drainage in the last 50 years, and that's not a Belavita thing, that's across the region. I will tell you, Ms. Erin brought up, "Come and look, come see." I went, and Ms. Linda, Mr. Smith showed me this land, and it drops off the shelf. The pictures here don't show, but there's four or five feet there. I mean, it is a depression, and I just, I struggle with that. For some of you who follow local politics, drainage is my favorite word, and I have a lot of sensitivity around it. The reality is, for the last, I'm going to say 20 or 30 years, we have not made the necessary investments, and now we are running and sprinting to catch up. There will be something on the bond issue here in 20 May of next year to start working on that. And I hope the good citizens here who have expressed concerns around drainage will find it in their hearts to spend those dollars because they are important. I think Mr. Smith brought up something that is readily apparent. If we do not deny this, we are inconsistent with what we talk about on drainage. We're talking out of both sides of our mouth. I respect Member Coza's position. I would like a win-win scenario, but from what the communications I have heard, there has not been an interest in a win-win scenario. It's been a win-lose scenario, but instead, it's everybody here loses and one person What I will tell you is this, the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few or the one. And this drainage issue is serious, the concerns are serious. That Gulf right now is 90 degrees, if you go check the water temperature. That means that the storms are bigger and warmer, and God forbid we have a large storm, people will get hurt. And I can't see that these people deserve to be punished because of one person's aspirations or thoughts. And so, I'm not going to probably get there. I have a funny feeling we are going to have more discussion around this, and we may have to find a way to keep this space green forever or in perpetuity. And I would hope that the stakeholders involved come to the table and do what they said they would do if dollars get involved or other items get involved. But the reality is, the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few, and I talked about it in my campaign previously. It's unfair that people go to bed wondering, are they going to see their dresser floating when they wake up in the morning? And I still feel like that, nothing has changed for me. And so, this is too environmentally sensitive. There's two acres literally in the floodway for the 100 or 500-year. This area should not be filled. But the reality is, is I'm not going to let some bureaucrat at Harris County Flood Control have to go make that decision. We can make that decision here tonight. So.
Any other questions, comments? Member Barry?
I want to thank everybody that's here tonight, and I share in your, I share in all your concerns. I understand where you're coming from, and it takes a lot of effort to get this many people in a room. I don't care what you're doing. I mean, if you're giving away $100 bills, you probably still won't get this many people in a room. But I'll tell you all a little story of kind of where I'm coming from. I used to live on Green Tea Drive in Pearland, and my next-door neighbor bulldozed his house, and he is having a hard time getting a permit. So I made a few phone calls, and we got the permit pushed, kind of pushed through, so he was able to rebuild his house. Well, what I didn't realize is, when he built his house, his slab was over the top of my pickup truck. So, I guess one of my first questions to some of our city officials here, I don't know if it's Trent or not, but at the time Belavita was built, was there that requirement to build 12 inches over base flood in that particular timeline, timeframe?
I'm going to have to defer to our engineering representatives that are here tonight.
Okay.
Good evening, councilmen. That is 2000, so at that time, we had some drainage guideline, but not engineering design criteria manual was adopted. So, I'm not 100% sure. We had, still had like FEMA flood map was adopted, and it should have been like minimum elevation would be set up based on the FEMA 100-year flood plane, but we did not have adopted those guidelines by that time.
Got you. And I know that Harris County plays a large part in that as well, so just a best guess is, I'm thankful for that. You know, and with my engineering background, I'm an electrical engineer by trade, I guess. The water has to go somewhere, it's going to move, and you know, per the FEMA guidelines that I found out about through that process, and this was in 2018, right? 2016. I moved in 2016 when this happened, but we, this particular home got built, and we were in an AE zone right up against the floodway, not necessarily in the floodway, but I learned a little bit about floodways, and it's not pretty. But I learned a little bit about floodways and it's not pretty. The problem is, is I lived right next door to this home. And so I immediately put a for sale sign up in my yard and I left. In two weeks, my house was sold and I moved to Mary's Creek. I've been there ever since. We had no problems with Harvey and, you know, I mean, I'm thankful that, you know, our community gives me the opportunity to do that. And Green Tea, I love Green Tea and I lived there for 12 years. But it scares me to death that given today's requirements for building that we didn't have back then, we would build in these areas that could affect people around us. So third-party people may be, may get affected. So I defer back to Councilmember Coza, Coza's comments and say that I would really love for the HOA and the developer, Ms. McGuire, to see if there's any kind of compromise we can come to so that either may, maybe they can buy out the lot or come to some agreement and whatnot. But I really, right now, have a hard time getting there and building these homes right there. I'm not necessarily against the current PD and the reason is, is because it was approved back then and, you know, as far as the development goes. So I have a hard time with that as well. So anyway, those are my two cents.
Thank you for that. Any other questions, comments from council?
I just want to say real quick, more than, well, along with the flooding, I live in Wood Creek, which is on the same side as Yoast, as Belavita, just a little bit closer to 518. And Darren Harvey, I think the water was probably an inch from my back door and a couple inches from my front door. So the flooding is, is very real and scary. So I know how, how y'all feel about that. But also the burden that this could place on your existing HOA and the existing homeowners that didn't ask for this is really compelling as well to me. So I don't think I will be able to get there even postponing what Member Coza was suggesting. I can't, I just can't get there on this.
Thank you, Mayor. So as far as the amendment goes, I'm going to be a no. I don't, I don't agree with postponing this. I think it's just dispensive at this evening. I have a little bit different angle. I think it's pretty well-known in the community that I'm somewhat of a tree hugger. It's become worse year after year. I don't know what it is. So the proximity to the reserve is really giving me pause here, trying to find maybe another avenue to, you know, take for these two lots or the six original, whatever it is. But I think as it is presented to us this evening, Mayor, for the amendment, I'm going to be a no.
Very good.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you all for coming out. Appreciate everybody. And we're here every other Monday night, so if y'all get bored, come on. And I agree with most everything that's been said. I think tonight we do need to vote this down. If the applicant wants to bring it back through the ordinary course, just to reinstate the PD, I think that's applicant's right. I assume we'll see a bunch of you here again. So I don't know if that works. But if there is, like Member Coza was saying, if there's some middle ground between the HOA, the seller, or the current owner of the property and in some way to tie this into a flood mitigation project or something, I'd be open for that because it doesn't make sense to develop right here, right up against the floodway.
Member Owens?
Yeah, you know, flooding and everything, it's, you know, a regional thing too. I mean, you look at Harris County and Houston, they're trying to push water out as fast as they can. You go over to Friendswood and they don't want to do anything because it looks so pristine. And I asked some of the officials over there, how pristine is that when you get up about 2:00 in the morning and you got water and you up to your knees? But that's what we've been dealing with. We're kind of caught in the middle on some of it, you know? And there's not going to be one residential, you know, or one house to fix this problem since you're caught in the middle of it. And so, you know, there's going to be, have to be something that we can do because, you know, everything's coming out of Harris County down toward this way and going to the creek and then on out, you know, to the Gulf. And so, you know, we're kind of caught in the middle on this thing as the way it is. And Houston is spending a lot of money, flood control, spending a lot of money, $300 million of getting water out of Houston and coming down this way. And people to the south of us is not helping us out that much of anything to help get that additional water coming in to get it out. So, you know, everybody is working together and the mayor knows this as well as anybody else does, how, sitting on some of the committees here in Houston and with that area there are talking about how we can, you know, kind of work together and get this worked out to be able to do it. It's something, it's a, it's a problem. And it's a problem that, you know, one residential house is not going to make the difference, you know, on your flooding or not. But you, you know, continue to go through that without identifying and everybody here talking about it, being able to do that. I think, you know, that's one of the things that we need to do. And this council and mayor here is really working as well as we can work and, you know, to it, to be able to subsidize coming here, get this water out of here. And it's a, you know, it's a, it's a big problem. But everything has to come in to make these decisions, you know, on there. So I appreciate people coming out. It's just good if somebody told them while they go, or to come in and say, hey, we fixed and raised taxes, you know, doubled the tax rate to do more detention tensions. But I'm, I'm not going to do that. I'll just let that go. But I appreciate people coming out and discussing it and talking about it. And the way it is, everybody's got an interest to it. We all do. And so, you know, and everything we can do to get it resolved, but it's, it's more than just apparently a problem. It's a regional-type problem to do that. Appreciate it.
We'll, we'll get to the vote here in just a minute. So you'll, you'll be able to hear it. Lawrence, I have a couple of questions because I want to make sure that we are very clear on what's going to be on the table. I know we'll have the new business item where we'll vote on this and put it on the table here in just a minute. But I want to make sure that we, that we clearly understand what we're voting on. So as presented in our packet that we, that we received, first reading of ordinance 2000M-227 is talking about to accommodate these two large lots. So it would have a reinstatement of the PD and an amendment to that PD to allow these two large lots. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The amendment isn't to the regulations in the PD, it's to the site plan and the PD. The site plan in the PD sets out the number of lots and the sizes of those lots. So the proposed amendment is to adjust that site plan. So you still have the Belavita PD. I mean, you're not changing any of the other things in that. It's just the site plan that the amendment is meant to do. If city council were to adopt that amendment, it is de facto restoring the PD from dormancy. I mean, the PD is still in existence. It doesn't go away. The developer just doesn't have the ability to file a site development permit until the PD is revived. So the PD's regulations are still there. It's a zoning district. It lives on. It guides the nature and shape. It guides the uses, most importantly, that can be there. So that's really the court issue. But by voting for the amendment, you would also be saying, yes, the PD is revived.
So when, when Ms. McGuire talks about, you know, moving away from that amendment, the accommodation of the two homes, instead go with basically the underlying PD, and I think going back to 2015, the preliminary plat that was approved and I can't remember the lot numbers, six to eight lots or whatever. So, and again, so if a denial, just an out-and-out denial of this ordinance makes it a denial altogether, she would have to come back through the process in order to reinstate the PD in order to do that? Or would it take an amendment to do that of this, where you take away this amendment but restore the PD? I'm just trying to make sure that we're clear on where this, where this vote would go.
Yes, sir. So a PD amendment with the way that it's published would allow you to do something less than amending the PD, which would include reinstating and allowing a site development application. So tonight, if you chose, you could vote to deny the amendment and it'll take an amendment from how it's done. You can deny amending the site plan, stopping the greater-sized lot and still allow reactivating the PD, which would allow Ms. McGuire or Forgotten Angels or whoever the builder is. I don't, I remember seeing something, but I forgot who it was, who the actual builder or proposed builder of the home. It would allow them to submit the next preliminary plat, going back to what was originally allowed based on the PD and the deed restrictions and whatever those covenants may have been.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure because it's, I know there was a comment about, I'm not going to do these two homes, I want to go back to the original. I want to make sure if, and I don't think there's votes to do that, but I want to make sure that what's the mechanism in order to get there? Ms. Cade?
Dormant.
That's correct. That's what I heard. So if we deny this action completely, the PD is still dormant? And as Member Carrbone said, it would, it would be the applicant would have to come and resubmit something to reactivate the PD, right? If I understand it.
That is an avenue that you can proceed with today.
That is an avenue.
Yes, sir. Because the reenactment of the PD would be less than doing the PD amendment.
Right.
You do have that authority to take that today, but to clean, clean the issues, if you wanted a fresh slate and just to do a reinstatement.
Right.
That is the other alternative. You could deny everything tonight and then come forward. But ultimately, the important issue for the council, remember, ultimately, the land has to be zoned something. We've adopted zoning. You have to have zoning. You have to zone that land. Anybody who owns land in Pearland has the right to have a zoning district. So you can't leave it unzoned. So you're either going to activate the PD or you're going to have to zone it something else. That something else has to be one of the zoning categories that we have.
Right.
Residential or non-residential. I mean, right, the zoning districts are there, it's going to have to be one of them.
Right. Okay. And then just to clarify a couple of things, comments that were made, I just want to make sure for the record, tonight, the legal description includes, it's the 3.17, not the 3.6 or 8 or whatever that got put out there before. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The application had an incorrect number in it. All of the publications and the notices had the correct number, all the legal publications and notices had the correct number of 3.17.
Right. 3.1749. And then the last question I'll ask on this, just to clean things up, do, what about a corrected deed? Is that something that we see? Or is that, I guess during the plating process, a correct deed is usually presented?
Yes, sir. So it's not during the zoning process, during the permit process. The community development will ensure that anybody who is alleged to submit that building permit owns that land at that time. So if there's land that's outside of the tracks where a permit's being submitted, that would be between the owners of those lands and the people in that deed restrictions. That's not a city issue. But before we issue a permit, we verify the correct ownership of that land.
Right, got you. Okay. Just trying to clean up a few of the comments that are made to make sure that we're all in the, in the right, in the right direction moving here. Last call, questions, comments from council? You have one?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Just since Lawrence from Legal laid out those options there, before we move into new business, I'll just kind of say my, my hopeful intention is that we just dispense of this item tonight and then give the applicant the opportunity to come back, have a clean slate. If she wanted to reactivate the PD, could do that separately to give the residents opportunity to speak on that at that time.
Good deal. All right, with that, I'm going to close this doctored public hearing and move to new business item number one. Mr. Coza, would you place it on the table, please?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number 2000M-227. So moved.
We have a motion and a second. I want to remind council, in order to approve this, it would require six votes of council to approve it. With the denial from planning and zoning, it takes a supermajority of the whole council. So it would take six. Is that correct, Lawrence?
Yes, sir. I think there are actually two triggers for the supermajority, although I don't, because Belavita, the homeowners association, also owns property.
Right.
There, I think there were a certain number of homeowners within the 20% threshold and additionally, the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah, I figured the, the planning and zoning denial triggered it automatically without going to the, the counting, the, the number of opposition.
Yes, sir.
Adjacent. So, all right, so with that, it'll take a supermajority. Any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Hey.
Member Potem Carrbone?
No.
Member Cam Carr?
No.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Cade?
No.
Member Barry?
No.
Member Owens?
No.
The motion, the motion fails 0 to 7.
All right. So with that one, I'm going to take a 10-minute recess. I know a lot of folks that are here may want to exit. So we'll allow, allow that to happen. You're welcome to stay as long as you want. So we're going to take a 10-minute recess. Convene at 8:21, come back from recess, good spirited discussion about a zoning case prior to this, so I think we're ready to move forward with that. Staff, ready to present the next public hearing, public hearing number two?
Yes, Mayor. Public hearing number two, this is a request from Jennifer Evans, applicant on behalf of Signature, U. Banks &amp; Associates, limited owner for approval of a conditional use permit for mini warehouse self-storage used on approximately 3.3131 acres of land within the general commercial GC District. And the general location is 7221 Fight Road. I'll go ahead and introduce the staff report. So again, this is conditional use permit to allow mini warehouse self-storage within the GC District on approximately 3.3 acres of land within the property, that just mentioned before, 7221 Fight Road. This is the zoning map, shows the location of the property, and the zoning is being GC. This is the proposed site plan, and it reflects 40,000 square foot climate-controlled self-storage facility located in the back with two retail buildings facing Mandrill Road. I should have said in the beginning that a CUP was granted for this property for self-storage in December of 2019, that the CUP had expired. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, before I get to that, these are some renderings that were provided by the applicant to show how they intend to develop this facility. As you can see, it's a four-story, a three-story building with some stone and brick facades. And this is a location map that shows existing self-storage facilities within one mile. We have two existing self-storage facilities within one mile, seven within two miles, and 13 within three miles radius. These are views from, taken from Fight Road, looking towards the property. And the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing for this proposed CUP at their regular meeting on July 18. A vote was conducted by the PNC, and all members stated that there would be a favor of the approval. It was one condition that was suggested by staff and accepted by applicant, and that condition was that the proposed use shall be developed in substantial conformance to the building materials depicted on the images that I've just shown on the presentation. And that concludes the staff report. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mohammed. I see Jennifer in the back. Do you have a presentation?
I'll be brief. Some of you may recall, we were here in 19, and we're given that CUP. COVID came, we shelved it, didn't realize we would lose a CUP, wasn't a great day at the office that day. But the good news is that through our professional services, we were aligned with storage space. And actually, I hope you'll agree, I think this is nicer in that we now are seeing the potential for the whole five acres. It softens the storage off of 1128, complies with the new ordinance, and is a nice facility. This is a nice group, it's a national group. They've done facilities in Sugar Land, or they have a very nice facility in Sugar Land. And I have one of their representatives here, and she'll run you through just a little background on their organization.
Thank you. Just for the record, give your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sabrina Pernellin. My address is 330 East Grand Point Road, Winter Garden, Florida. The microphone isn't, hold on. Okay. My apologies. So first things first, thank you so much for taking the time of reviewing our case. Storage space is, by the way, I also represent the Reconstruction and Development Department. I am the person that is in charge of making sure that we're finding the right properties for the right locations. Just on premise, I'm going to be as brief as I can. Storage space is, let's say, a development company founded around four years ago, and was specialized in doing everything that has to do with, again, self-storage facilities. We have been infinitely successful when it comes to, let's say, finding the right locations for our facilities. We have across 40 different types of developments going on right now in 18 different states, being actually Texas is one of our favorite ones. We do have a property located in San Antonio. We have another one located in Sugar Land, which were the pictures that you showed early on. We also have another one located in Humble, Texas. Hopefully, I said that right. And we're looking forward very, very much to be able to add another store of our portfolio coming from Pearland. If you don't mind, please, can you go to the next slide? Thank you. So as you may see, these are the different territories that we have across the country. We're definitely taking account, not just the fact that we want to develop in the facilities, but also in consideration what is going to be the demographics, the demands of the locations, and also we make them very custom for each requirements to be able to have the best aesthetics for the facilities. Next, please. These are three samples of some developments that we have going on. The first one is a ground-up facility located in Poughkeepsie, New York. Typically, our developments are very, very, let's say, standard. We are looking forward to have a three-story building, 40,000 square feet footprint for 120,000 across the whole country, hopefully. So here, you have three different renderings from three different properties that right now are under construction documents, and hopefully, we can have shovels in the ground very soon. The second one is the storage space West York in Pennsylvania, and then you have Fairview, New Jersey. Next. And then, the Texas market, as you may see, we have storage space Sugar Land, Texas, which is actually the inspiration for the aesthetics of the new property coming up in Pearland, Texas. Then we have another property located in Beaumont, and then finally, Humble. With that being said, as Ms. Jennifer explained before, and the staff report explained before, this is a property that is going to have, is going to be a climate-controlled self-storage facility with, let's say, the storage is going to be just one building, and then the retail spaces are going to be two 20,000 square feet footprint each one. We expect to have some sort of, let's say, we want to have a very safe and secure property and facility, and that's why we expect to have PTI and control system on any access point. Self-storage is also a very low-traffic regenerator type of business, which is something very positive typically, and is very welcome by the cities as well, because, again, we don't have to deal with that much traffic. Next, please. And finally, well, let's say this is some sort of very, very conceptual site plan, and it shows what it was mentioned before, is one building, three-story facility, 40,000 square feet footprint, and then the retail space is up front. And later on in the renderings, you'll be able to see how everything ties up together, the material selection, the dimensions of the buildings, just to make sure that actually it makes total sense. Next, please. Here, it's just a little one-on-one of self-storage, because I know that even that happened to myself, the first time I heard about self-storage, I didn't even know what was that. But actually, it is a market that right now has a lot of demand, because unfortunately, there is a lot of people going through certain hardships, or there is a lot of, let's say, businesses that are starting as well. So at the end of the day, we just want to make sure that we offer also a service that is high in quality. So this is a typical depiction of how a 10x10 unit would look like, or a 100 square feet unit. And this is the type of self-storage that we're searching for, with no hazardous material or any type of live animals. We just want to make sure that people have their belongings in a safe space. And then finally, this is the rendering. This is how we expect it to look like. You have in the back section, the self-storage facility, and then on the sides, you have the retail spaces, of course, with the landscape and any type, other type of code requirements. Next, please. Then, if there is any further information that you might need or you would like, just please feel free to reach out to us, and we'll be more than happy to help you. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. Jennifer, does that conclude the applicant's presentation? All right, thank you. If we have any questions, we may have you back up there here in just a minute. So moving forward in our public hearing, now's the opportunity for those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Go to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Second attempt, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. And third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing no one moving in that direction, we'll turn it to City Council for questions, comments, and concerns. Mr. Owens?
Yeah, I remember this from about 10 years ago on there, and I thought it, matter of fact, I voted against it, because I thought it's better use of the land.
Sure you did.
And I think when I went out there the other day, the same three cows were out there on the corner. And that was about 10 years ago, so I don't think I'm going to speak against it this time.
Member Berry?
Yeah, yeah. No, I think this is great. I love the look and feel of it. I think it's representative of kind of what we're looking for is in the city of Pearland and this area, and I think it's going to work real well. Thanks.
I saw that Planning and Zoning had the, or staff asked for, that looked to be, I can't remember exactly how it was worded, Mohammed.
It was just to be in substantial conformance to the material that is shown on the exhibit that was included with the pack.
Y'all didn't have a problem with that? That's for sure going to be, it's going to for sure look like that. Okay, thank you.
Well, we will make it an amendment to the motion once we have that on the table.
Hernandez? Thank you, Mayor. This was, it took me forever, but thank you, Francis, for helping me figure out how to use our system to find the previous vote, but it was a close vote, it was a 3-4 vote. I voted against it last time, and the, Member Owens, though, has changed his vote, so that's interesting. The same will probably hold tonight. I'm just, we just have a lot of storage facilities, and we've spoken about this, we've tightened up our UDC to, you know, make it more difficult for storage units, I just, you know, there are just a lot of them already. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. You have any questions, comments?
I'm going to be consistent, better-looking product now, I'm still in favor of the project. Thank you.
Member Coza, Campar? All right, good deal. So when we get to, Mohammed, would you put the language on that you had mentioned towards the end of your presentation up on the screen? I'm assuming council would want to go ahead and make sure that we put this condition on here, that proposed use shall be developed in substantial conformance to the building materials depicted in the images. materials depicted in the images. So when we move to the next item, actually, new business, we need to put that on the table and then do an amendment for that. So with that, we're going to close this public hearing and move to new business item number two. Member Cam Carr, would you present that, please?
Yes, Mayor. Excuse me. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R2022-CUP22-12, so moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Now entertain a, an amendment, a motion to amend.
I'll make the amendment.
Okay.
Mohammed, could you put that back up there for me, please? I'd like to make a motion for amendment for the proposed use shall be developed in substantial conformance to the building materials depicted on the images provided by the applicant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend. Any questions on that? Seeing none, Madam Secretary will vote on the motion to amend.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Amendment passes seven, six to zero.
Okay, so we have an amended motion on the table now.
Seven.
Yeah, we'll have, we have an amended motion on the table, so now we'll vote, Madam Secretary, on the amended motion.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Cade? Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Carbone?
Aye.
The motion passes six to one.
All right. Good deal. Moving forward in our agenda, public hearing number three, same deal. Mohammed?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request by Mona Miller, applicant on behalf of Stephen Ryan, owner, for approval of a zone change for approximately 3.611 acres of land from heavy industrial M2 district to general commercial GC district. General location southwest quadrant of Main Street and Bailey Road. Moving into the staff report, again, a zoning request from heavy industrial M2 district to general commercial district for 3.611 acres of land, and the general location is southwest quadrant of Main Street and Bailey Road. This is a zone, zoning map, and it shows this property be located just near the PUD for Alexander Burns that just got approved to, for residential uses, and it's also surrounded by another GC district just right at the hard corner of Bailey and, and Main Street. GC, GC district is also across the street from Main Street. So there's already some GC districts in the vicinity and a new residential PD on the west and, and, and south. These are views taken from Main Street towards the property. And the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing for this proposed zone change at their regular meeting on July 18. A motion to approve the requested zone change from M2 to GC was approved by a vote of three to one, with Commissioner Dansby voting against it, and this constitutes a positive recommendation to the City Council for approval. And that concludes staff report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mohammed. Moving forward, is our applicant here? Do you have a presentation?
Thank you. I'm Mona with the Christie Buck team at Infinity Real Estate Group. The owner, Steve Ryan, is also here. We are presenting this zone change, again, to be in accordance with the residential zoning that was approved earlier this year. Mr. Ryan has been marketing this property as industrial for several years with very little interest for industrial. The only one that I can think of was a crane business, and as soon as they realized the residential was going in around it, they quickly decided that would be a conflict. So we just feel like this is a good continuation of the zoning to the north of it and across the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mona. With that, we'll move to those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Same drill, go to the podium, give your name and address in three minutes. Second attempt, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. And third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing no one moving in that direction, we'll turn it over for questions, comments, concerns from council. Anyone have anything? Member Cam Carr?
Just very quickly, the, explain the situation again where the industrial user changed their mind. Can I just get, how long was that interaction prior to, you got to go to the?
So we're constantly discussing, of course, opportunities with different buyers. So this one was as recent as probably two months ago, that they wanted to put in the crane service, and they did, started doing their research, looked like the property was going to work for them. It was a good location, easy access, but they absolutely did not want to deal with the residential with their industrial use.
You say it's like a crane, like a building crane that goes like?
Correct. Correct.
All right. So the reason I say that, we're, we're having some other robust discussions in this corridor, and, and I think we've discussed when that large PUD went in, that was a contested 4-3 every single time. And I think that is illustrative, that as soon as they find out what is there, all of a sudden residential and this, this large industrial just does not jive. And, and I have those concerns. I hope that as this process goes forward throughout the next calendar year, that we, we reevaluate this whole corridor. It sounds like this is going to keep happening, and, and this owner is being proactive to move that use, and I applaud that, but the reality is, heavy industrial and residential just don't go. And so I'll be supportive, but I'd like to just lay that out there, that, that is a bigger discussion happening, and, and this is one real-world example of how it just didn't work. So, thank you.
Good comment. Any other questions, comments? All right. Moving forward in our agenda, we will close the public hearing. Moving forward in our agenda, Mayor Protem Carbone, would you present new business item number three, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action, First Reading of Ordinance 2000M-229, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We've had the staff report and opportunity for questions, comments. Madam Secretary will call for the vote.
Mayor Protem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Good deal. Moving forward to public hearing number four, staff report, or put it on the table, reason and staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. A request, public hearing number four is a request by Stephen Henderson, applicant on behalf of CAFRE LLC owner for approval of a zone change for approximately 40.752 acres of land from light industrial M1 district to general commercial GC district. Location is 1014 Main Street. Moving into the staff report, zone change request from light industrial M1 district to the general, general commercial GC district for 40 acres of land, and this is a zoning map showing the location of the property. This is the location of the existing flea market just south of the Beltway. It's on the west side of Main Street, and it is surround, it is zone currently light industrial, and there's a GC district just to the east of Main Street. This is an aerial, and it just shows existing conditions of property. The intent, the applicant intent is to rezone this to GC to accommodate and match the existing commercial use of the property, which is the flea market with retail uses. And this is, these are a few photos taken from Main Street looking toward the existing flea market. On the right side, you can see that new food truck park that was just approved by City Council just about a year ago. And moving on to the recommendation, the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted the public hearing for this zone change at the regular meeting on July 18, and a motion to approve the request from M1 to GC failed to be approved by a vote of one to three, with Commissioner Fortes voting to approve. This also constitutes a negative recommendation to the City Council, require a supermajority for approval, and that concludes staff report.
All right. Thank you for that. Is the applicant present? All right. Thank you. Please give your name and address for the record, and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Andrew Allamond with Winrose Land Services, 1111 Richmond Avenue in Houston, Texas. And as you said, I'm here representing the applicant's case. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, obviously, there was a recommendation to disapprove. We heard their input, and we agree with pretty much every single one of their concerns. The difference is, we obviously believe that rezoning this property is the way to solve a lot of those problems. You can see on the map, on the screens, there's GC across the street. This property has been used as a GC-type property since the late 60s, and so certainly it has established itself as the concrete use in the area, and the highway is just to the north of it as well. And so that, that's really the crux of our case, is that regardless of the use that's been there, GC is the best use for this property. This is one of the last corridors, like fully-developed corridors in the city, 35 coming south from the highway. The city has spent a ton of money enhancing that corridor, working on that street, beautifying it, and this is definitely something that is eligible for a GC and something that I think the city would want to help improve itself over time. And that's been the problem with the property up until now. It was just transacted about a year and a half ago to the new owners, and so maybe, maybe almost two years now. And so they bought the property, knowing that it was an existing flea market, knowing that their intent was to improve it, to obviously put in new utilities, the, the food court, obviously, the food trucks, to get that development in and, and just improve the park, its operations, what, what it provides and its opportunities for its customers. It's a multi-phase development project. It's, it's taking time, and that's what you would expect when taking over a project of this, this ilk. Traffic is one of the big things they're working on. Of course, stacking can become a problem every so often, not, not really that often, but when it does, they're interested in looking at a traffic impact analysis to see how they can fix that, maybe stack in, do different things on the property. But that's what happens when you get the right zoning on the properties. You can do some of those things. You justify the investment, everything that, that's in the property. There's some hesitancy there when the zoning isn't correct, and you're kind of like on borrowed time, so to speak, but that, that's the intent here. And they definitely want to capitalize on that and, and kind of like have the zoning that matches the use that's been on the property since the late 60s. And we think GC zoning is appropriate for the area regardless of the use, and certainly for the development that's in the property right now.
Good deal.
Evening, Mr. Mayors, council members. Lincoln Hoffman, I'm with United Flea Markets. I was out here about a year ago for the food truck park. I want to say thank you for having me out tonight. So first and foremost, I do want to appreciate all the steps and the partnership that we've had with the city in developing the food truck park. As Andrew stated, it is a phased approach. To be completely transparent, we had some aggressive push from our investment community to get it open sooner rather than later, so we had to take this phased approach into opening it. We're currently in permitting right now to finish out that portion, portion of the project. You know, we love this property. We really love working with Pearland. Fire Marshal Chad has been phenomenal. We've brought a lot of deficiencies up to code and up to date. We've been working with rants over in code and environmental. All the third-party food vendors are inspected, permitted. None of that had been done for probably 20 years. We've been working with Izzy. We've been trying to make sure that we're doing things the right way, and we're working with you in partnership to do that. To date, we've invested over $800,000 in capital dollars just in improving the project, and probably close to a million in deferred R and M. We want to continue to improve this property. It's the gateway into Pearland. It's the first thing people see as they come in there. You know, the 35 corridor is a busy stretch. We want to make sure that we're not a blight on the, on the city, but we're an inviting, welcoming presence as people come in. You know, we, with the flea market, I think there's a little bit of a misconception as to what it actually is and what we do. We provide opportunity for hundreds of small businesses to support thousands of families. And, Mr. Mayor, as you were speaking earlier about the rising cost of inflation, you know, with regards to your X center that you guys were debating, you know, we're a value proposition for thousands and thousands of families as well. We want to continue to improve the property. We want to make it safe. We want to make it aesthetically appealing, but there does kind of reach a point of diminishing return when every single time we need to make some kind of drastic improvement, we have to go through, you know, a, a challenging process to get the ball across the, the finish line. So at the end of the day, I, I just want to amplify, or amplify how great it's been to work with fire and city and code. They've been extremely amicable in working with us to get these projects to where they need to be, and I, I do just want to temper everybody. Yeah, there, there's a lot of deferred maintenance out there, and we're working on it. We can't do it overnight. We need, we just need a little patience, but we are committed to it. We're committed to Pearland. We're committed to flea market business. We're not looking to rezone it and turn it into something else. We have 15 of them across the country. That's what we do. So, thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. We may have some questions, so we'll, we'll come back to that, right? And, and again, thank you for coming back to Pearland. We welcome you anytime. With that, we'll move to those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Go to the podium, give your name and address for the record in three minutes.
Good evening. Good evening. Harry St. Clair, 1009 North Main. Thank you for having me and being able to speak for a few minutes. I have a lot of concerns having to do with a zone change for the simple reason that once you do a zone change in general commercial, if you turn that property into general commercial, basically, they can do anything overnight. At the end of the day, it really doesn't matter what we want to do, anything can be done. They can flip the property and sell it to someone else and do anything they want on that property. Everything around that property, as you see that big industrial site to the west of it and to the south of it, is a huge pipe yard, which can also do anything in industrial overnight, essentially, which would basically go right into that piece of property. Across the street, it is zone commercial. However, my two neighbors, I have the track right across the street, and my two neighbors have industrial operations going on, on those properties, and then you have a vacant piece of land. Yes, that area does have its commercial, it's, it's a mix of commercial and industrial. It is what it is. However, City of Pearland recently has lost about, I think about 80 acres on South Main and Bailey, and I don't think we should lose another 40 acres, especially when there is a lot of industrial activity taking place in that area along Beltway 8. And from many, many meetings that I have heard of the City Council and Planning and Zoning, my understanding is that industrial buyers do not really want to go through Pearland to the south side, and as we heard just a little while ago, it looks like maybe something else is going to be rezoned, but, and, and more, we're losing more industrial. We just don't have very much industrial for the City of Pearland. I just am asking that you deny the request mostly for that reason, so that we do not lose it, because we have a very small percentage of industrial in the City of Pearland. Thank you. Thank you.
Second request, for those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. And third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing none, we will move forward to questions, comments, concerns from City Council. Member Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. To the applicant, I just want to say, I, I watched your interactions with our Planning and Zoning Commission, and I just wanted to express, I think maybe there are some things that were said at that meeting that I would like to apologize for some of those comments, especially having you come here and say that you're excited to work with us, you're thankful for the opportunity to be here. That being said, I, I do tend to agree with the gentleman who just spoke. I think, you know, this is a, this would be a big loss for our industrial on this specific corridor, but at the same time, you know, I, I did want you to feel welcomed in this city, you know, and I, I'm thankful for the improvements that you have done. I know whenever you came to look at adding the little food truck park, and we didn't really know what was going on with the code there, we had to, you know, move some things around, figure some things out for you, but it looks like you got it done. Are you up and running now?
Kind of. Yeah, we're up and running. We're, like I said, we're still going through a phased development portion of it. We're in permitting right now to finish out our utility portion for the full connect, shade sales, all of those pieces as far as the structural goes and the bar, and then the next phase is submitting for the commissary. So we're, we're deep into it. We're open. We're, we're not open the way I would have liked, but we're open. And as far as the comments are concerned, I absolutely appreciate that. And look, you know, in its present state, there's definitely some, some bliteness to it. I get it. Our intent is to improve upon it, and, you know, with respect And, you know, with respect to losing the industrial zoning nature of the market itself, the market has been operating as a flea market since 1968. We have 15 flea markets across the country. Quite honestly, from a land value perspective, if we wanted to flip that, it would be more advantageous to us to sell it under the light industrial aspect. And then anybody could come in, you know, to the comments that were made and do whatever they want under an industrial code. We want to, we want to move it more towards that consumer end of things and be more in alignment with what the actual market is. It's, it's more of a general commercial retail center. So I just wanted to put that out there. But thank you, sir. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you. And then to staff, to some of the comments that the applicant did make about like a TIA, things like that, what would bar them from doing things like that with the current zoning as they move forward and want to make improvements?
In part, it's going to depend on what the proposed use is for the, whatever it might be that they want to add to the park. Some of y'all may be aware that the City of Pearland was engaged in litigation with Coles Flea Market at the time, or some time ago, not at the time. And the result of that was a agreed judgment that outlined what the uses could be. And if it was not one of those specific uses, then it would be whatever the zoning district would allow. So if they wanted to do something more akin to what they think the flea market uses are, it's a non-conforming use. And every time they have a non-conforming use, if they want to expand that non-conforming use, they have to come in and get permission to do that by the ZBA at that time, or at the ZBA when they want to come forward. So I think that that, there's nothing that stops the TIA. They could take, take upon the TIA and do improvements to the site. But to do the uses that justify that, and I think that that's what Lincoln would say, is the business, the value proposition.
Right.
You know, if he wants to make those improvements, first he has to...
Essentially just a more cumbersome process, but there is a pathway to get there, as it were.
And just to be clear, we've already started conducting traffic impact analysis. We realize that the circulation and the traffic flow is an issue and that's, those are the things we're trying to explore to improve upon. You know, just, just to resolve some of the backup on Maine to help with some of the egress and ingress within the property. So we're exploring, you know, what we need to do to do that. But after we get the data and the information, actually bringing that forward and trying to make changes is where it becomes overly burdensome.
And Mayor, forgive my ignorance, I haven't been through, you know, as many scenarios as some up here, so that's why I have these questions. But if, if there were non-conforming uses that were brought forward, could they, Lawrence, maybe package those or would they have to come each time? I mean, I guess maybe with each request? Or could they say, this is our plan, our phased approach? This is, we would like to put this forward as kind of a package of considerations versus having to come every time they wanted to phase or move into the next phase?
So I would say it depends in part on what that proposed use is and how it deviates from that agreed judgment and the zoning district requirements. If you wanted to do a package saying over in this section here and then over in this section here, you'd have to have really good descriptors to say which area it is because, you know, each one of those is going to require some sort of notice that goes out that specifically describes it. You know, you can't say the entire property. You would say this section of that property. But, you know, I'm, I'm going to be a little bit more broad. Planning might have a more definitive guide on that. So I didn't realize how hard it is to see y'all over here from this angle. Sorry.
And I'm only asking that because I'm assuming that y'all have a vision for what you want. And, you know, I'm just trying to think through the logistics of this. When you purchased it, I'm assuming you knew what the zoning was. And, you know, knew that this may have been the process and, you know, as I'm making a decision here, I'm trying to think, are we making this so cumbersome that nothing can ever be done to improve it? And then, like you said, the value proposition just goes away? Or is there a pathway? Is there an easier way to kind of get it together?
Well, there, I mean, there's always a pathway to get something done, no matter what. That's my just personal philosophy on anything. But there does come a point where when we divide our time and our resources, we have to focus in on the projects and the properties that are going to offer us the quickest return on the investment and then also the improvement within the property itself. Just, just that, for instance, we're developing another food truck park out in Tucson. Our turnaround time from submittal to permit was three weeks. I've never encountered that anywhere. That's, I think, the other extreme. I'm doing the same thing in Fort Myers, that I've had to actually go in and write the new ordinance and the code and partnership with city council out there. And then permitting alone is a six-month review and turnaround process. So, you know, that being said, we've tabled that project for the time being and we're choosing not to invest those dollars into that park and that community. That, that's kind of what I'm getting at is when, we're at a point now with Coles Flea Market where we want to continue to improve on the property. It, I mean, a lot of people look at Coles and they see rundown. I see nothing but opportunity at that market. I think it could be so amazing and all the things that we could do and put into that market and improve the site. But there, like I said, there has to become a point where the return, both on money and time, just outweighs the investment.
I appreciate that. And Mayor, I'll yield there and see if planning wanted to add anything.
I just wanted to speak to our turnaround time and say that, well, three weeks, I think for any project is high, is a good turnaround. It helps to turn around when, you know, a process is, is a partnership between the applicant and their design team, turning things in and getting things to us and us responding. So, you know, we can only do, work with what we have. And so I think it wasn't the process, it wasn't the CUP or the conditional, you know, for this that dragged the process out. There were other factors outside of staff's control. The issue obviously becomes, if you turn this, if you rezone this to general commercial, does it, is the potential of what it could become compatible? Or are there adjacency issues being next to industrial? If you see the industrial saying what it is, staying what it is, if it's been the same for 50 years, is it going to stay the same? So obviously, general commercial is wide-ranging and has a, has a lot of activities that would be allowed that, that would bring people there. Obviously, the flea market does that, brings a lot of retail and people there. So with, with how we did the food market, we, we looked at the definition of flea market and what it was allowed, and we said the food truck park fit in that. And so through, and kind of an amendment to the conditional use permit that the flea market should have had, but was kind of grandfathered with, the fleet, the food truck was added. So I think there's flexibility in that definition that other changes could be made as, as they become identifiable versus just a wide range, rezone it and whatever happens, happens.
What are some non-conforming uses that...
The whole thing.
All of them?
The whole thing.
The whole thing. So...
Self is a non-conforming use because it was...
That's, that's kind of what I was thinking.
But the food truck is a conforming use because it did, the food truck park, because it did come through the process. The CUP was granted for that. And so as they, they seek to make amendments to their, their location and what they want to do, I think we can find ways to make that work.
But since it's a market in a light industrial area, it is a non-conforming use, isn't it?
It is an allowable use through a conditional use permit in this district. It's just that the market was present prior to the zoning.
Right.
Before they get to continue that. So as long as they continue that use, they have that right. And anything under the definition of flea market, the way they've been operating it, they can continue. It's when they bring in new things that have not been present at that location, but could still fall under the definition that we would seek to amend what should be a CUP to include those items.
So there's nothing, there's no specific non-conforming uses that you were, that you mentioned? It's just everything else?
Yes, ma'am. So I mean, the flea market, well, the judgment as a result of the lawsuit said that the flea market itself and the uses that were then existing would be considered non-conforming uses. So it's, it's the entire operation of what was going on at the day of that final judgment, plus anything that would be outside of the M1 zoning district would be non-conforming.
So making, giving them a GC zoning would open it up to everything that comes with GC, whatever they would want to put in there.
If it's a GC, it would actually, it would essentially make the agreed judgment no longer...
Null and void.
Well, I wouldn't say null and void, I would just say it's no longer needed because that had to do with non-conforming uses. So it would just be a complete rezone and then anything that's in the GC category would be allowed at that site.
All right.
One thing that, I guess that really bothers me is this is actually a great corner for light industrial right there on the Beltway. And I do have a hard time with that, but, I mean, they've been there for a long time operating, so I don't, I'm really, I'm torn on this one.
Cam Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know who has this. Can we pull up the write-up really quickly, right before the, I guess the last page where Martin signs off? If you're looking at the whole document, it's like page 183 to 72. Really quickly, we're talking about like there's some transitional changes that like we're kind of waiting on. What are those couple of things that we're waiting on? I have not, they don't send us these emails about like these progress items on like very, very specific items. So what are like these progress items that you guys are waiting on?
As far as...
You keep saying that there are certain things that need to change or move and that you're waiting on. What are these items? Can you be more specific?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time following, but it is, as it pertains to the current development that's going on out there, is that what you're asking, council?
I guess what I'm hearing is what being intimated is like, we have these changes we want to do.
Right.
But something is not being done over here with paperwork or...
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm sorry if I, if I insinuated that. No, it's been great working with the city, planning, development. Everybody's been good with the stuff that we've had to present forward. It's, so for any of the future improvements and changes that we want to put out at the market, which has just been discussed here, we would have to go through either additional CUPs or, you know, potentially bring forward, you know, another option that we're willing to discuss. It gets to a point where our time and money can be better served elsewhere. It is kind of what I'm intimating at. So if we wanted to go forward to an improvement out the park, just due to that prior judgment under the previous owner, we're going to have to submit a whole nother CUP package. We're going to have to go through and then, so...
Because they're non-conforming, everything is a check.
Exactly, yeah. My intent is to try to alleviate some of the red tape and allow us to improve the property as it has existed since 68, but under an appropriate zone for the...
Got it. And so can we pull up the part where, right before Martin signs off, it's got the vote tally at the bottom?
What's the page?
It might be six.
Slide, slide.
Keep going.
With the PowerPoint, it just shows the vote.
Oh, I want to see right here. This memorandum right there that's on the page, I want to zoom in on that. So there's kind of like some rationale, what happened at P&amp;Z. And I guess here's the part where I'm struggling. I don't have all the data, but I'm trying to piece it together. And I was, we were here when you, when you came last year and there was a lot of flowery and fluffy imagery. There was members of the council who were very excited, myself included, for something better than what was there for, since 1960-something. And here was the item that I think was member Danzby and member Eisenberg, or Commissioner Eisenberg said, quote, "He stated that when Coles Flea Market and Cometa Food Park came to the P&amp;Z Commission for the CUP application, he was in favor of the product they presented. And none of the changes have taken place and the site is still an eyesore." Commissioner Eisenberg said that the site needs to be cleaned up and amusement park rides should be a hazard to children. So the part, I'm not going on the amusement park thing, but when there's certain discussion around, here's what we were going to do, it's been a year, and I understand it, there's certain checkpoints, you don't want to have to go through every single guardrail, right? There was a lot of discussion when it was first here last year, here's what we're going to do, here's how we're going to proceed, here's what we do all the time, and it seems like we're not executing. And that I find is to be problematic. And the first time I'm hearing about it is when we're here today saying, we can't do all this stuff. And I guess there's like a veiled threat or comment that like if this doesn't happen, we're not going to do anything else. And so I have a lot of discomfort with that, that I just can't seem to get over. I, there's a certain amount of proffering and imagery and discussion, and it sounds like you guys are fairly sophisticated. If we had done this a year ago and said, change this whole thing now, this might be alleviated, but it sounds like we didn't do that and now there's a lot of spilled milk and it seems like we're being told we got to fix it. And I just, it's frustrating because they're just doing their job. And if it's in a non-conforming use and there's a checkpoint and the checkpoint has to come to us, it's a very frustrating process. But all I feel right now is if the place is still an eyesore a year later, what is the problem? Like the bare minimum is, what are we doing along that right-of-way where there's a street? If the bare minimum is a TIA to stop traffic, well, that was known a year ago. And the part, as somebody who's a development professional, you don't have half a TIA. You either have one or you don't. And it says, we need to go do this. Do we have a TIA that says we need to go do this? Do we have a TIA that says we need to do something?
Yeah, and the engineer for the project is here, and I think he'll comment on that in a second. If it's amenable to the council, and I think one of the biggest things that came out of the planning commission was to possibly shift gears and go with a planned unit development to put some things concretely on paper. And we're willing to do that. It's obviously not ideal, but I think that's something that we could definitely look at. Staff's been really good about talking us through all the options. And so we're willing to look at that. I think planning commission would have been a majority vote approval if this would have been a planned unit development as opposed to straight zoning because of the awkwardness with the industrial. So we're willing to entertain that and I'll turn it over to the engineer to talk about the TIA.
Hi, I'm Gavin Stevens, the engineer of record for the first phase of this project, the flea market that was approved, the food truck park. And the second phase of the project, which is, I believe it's been approved pending BDD4 approval. And the plan is to be the engineer of record for all the future phases, of which there are several planned. So Lincoln already mentioned this, but the, the issue, the reason that part of this is taking longer than maybe it should be, was really an investor issue of trying to get something open as fast as possible. And obviously, I'm not on the, the financial side, but there were recommendations we made from an engineering perspective that we thought, okay, maybe this can be approved faster if we just do, if we try and do as much as we can at once, but it didn't make sense financially. So that's part of what's contributing to having to stretch out this project into multiple phases. But like I said, there's, there's one that's completed, second one is nearly approved, and we've got three, four more in the works that we've already discussed, including some traffic improvements. The TIA has been performed. We have that TIA and that is shaping some of the future decisions that future phases are going to have.
So it's been accepted and you guys are executing?
Yes.
And I'm assuming those are costing more than we want to pay? Is that kind of the issue?
That's not the issue.
Well, I just...
And I apologize if, you know, my comments came off the way that you're receiving them because that wasn't the intent at all. There was no veiled threat or anything of that nature. It's purely a business decision. We have 15 markets across eight states. I oversee all of those. I see mergers and acquisitions, development, new construction. I am one person. I am dedicating my time, the most efficient use of my time. So I apologize if that's how it came across. That was not the intent, even remotely. I still, this is my favorite market in our portfolio outside a mile high, Arnhem. And I want to continue to reinvest into this property. And the whole premise of coming here is to further help us to do that. We've worked in partnership with the city from day one, whereas we know prior ownership has been extremely combative with the city. And that is not our intent, that is not what we do. And again, I apologize if that's how it came across. I'm simply stating my business proposition and how I have to operate these markets.
All right. So I guess I can only speak for myself, I don't speak for anybody else. My advice is just, somebody who's a development professional has to go before that, is pick one track and go down that road. You want to go down this road, go down this road. You want to go down the PUD road, go down the PUD road. I have a really hard time telling... time telling Commissioner Dansby and the rest of the group over there that they're wrong. If they're making comments like the basic areas that need to clean out, like these are low-hanging fruit in development world. This is, this is, it's optics and it's trees and it's cleanup. The other items, I understand. It's putting things in the ground. But I have a really hard time in good faith saying, let's do all these changes when the basic items that people are addressing and bringing up and brought up a year ago are still not redressed. And the part that I struggle with, just me, nobody else here is saying this, the flags and the imagery still isn't there. And it's been 12 months. We're now going in an economic down cycle. And the talk about reinvestment and all this, you make tough decisions, and I hear that. But we don't want to go and make all these changes and be left out. And then this gentleman here, who's been here for decades, is telling us he doesn't want this, and he's opposing you. And we have to go tell him, well, we're going to oppose him. And so I have a real hard time. He's been here, he's doing his job. So I just, I just need to see the people that they say they're going to do a certain thing, do a certain thing.
And I appreciate, and to the flags and the imagery, we did put those up. They were in violation of signage laws within the city. So, you know, it is part of that phase development and building it out is, that's the intent to finish it out. As far as the trash goes, I would encourage you to speak with Fire Marshal Chad McCoon. You know, I was speaking with him prior to this meeting, and he was very excited about the improvement in cleanup, the improvement with compliance, working with him and his team. You could speak with Rance over in Code and Environmental, and all that we've done and taken steps, the partnership with them to clean up the property in the third party. So again, I appreciate it. It's 40 acres. It's been there a long time. It has been in disrepair for a long time. We've invested already, since we've owned it, through a pandemic, over a million dollars in refurbishing the property. And a lot of it is underground, and you're not going to see it. I appreciate it. But we are, we are putting significant dollars back into that property we have from day one.
Thank you, Mayor. That might be it.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments from council?
Last, last, last question. We spent a lot of time talking about PDs and so on. So if you had your druthers, what would you do with it? What are, what are your plans?
Well, I mean, first and foremost, we know that there's a lot of buildings that are in gross disrepair out there. We'd like to remove those buildings, put in a phase plan, rebuild those in time, improve parking lot, improve the general selling areas, both internally and externally. At some point, we would like to implement possibly some small kiddie rides out at the park, like we have in a number of our other sites. Improve the food and beverage program within the site itself, bring in more. We have internally-operated retail operations at other markets. We'd like to try and build those out and bring those into the market. I mean, there's a myriad of things that we would like to add and supplement to the market to help improve it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So with the, with the comments that Lincoln just, just made, so John Helpme, being a nonconforming use, what obstacles are in the way from them being able to do what he just mentioned? Tearing this building down, redoing that one, sod, this, that, all these different components? What obstacles are in the way, being a nonconforming use, to be able to do that?
The main issue would be only if he wanted to enlarge buildings, right? Repair, replace of existing structure with the same square footage would be fine. The, and so, you know, sod, landscaping, that wouldn't be issues at all. I would point out that under GC, open-air markets, including flea markets, are conditional use permanent as well. So that doesn't solve the problem of nonconforming uses. It doesn't suddenly become a conforming use under general commercial. It just allows all the commercial uses on top of that. But they'd still have to, they wanted to enlarge a building or bring in a new service that, that added something that wasn't there now, wasn't not, wasn't under that grandfather and that vesting, they'd still have to come in for a conditional use permit under GC. So...
So Lincoln, so Helpme out, if you wanted to, you know, some of the buildings that are in, as you're stated, you know, grossly disrepair, and I think we would agree, are you wanting to, you know, bring those down, same square footage, go back up? Or do you want to reconfigure, you know, the buildings that are out there?
Well, I mean, I think we can all agree that the current layout with some of the buildings within the market creates some traffic challenges. So we would want to optimize any kind of new build-out to help better flow the ingress and egress of traffic, but then also help with the general pedestrian foot traffic throughout the market itself. You know, for some of these structures that are out there, they, they just, they've just kind of popped up over time.
Sure.
You know, so there's, there's no really rhyme or reason to any of it. So if we were to make that kind of an investment, to come in and start putting new structures in, we would want to create some kind of plan that would help our circulation pattern from a customer standpoint and a retail standpoint, as far as where they're going throughout the market, to help maximize sales for the vendors.
Okay. So it sounds like, John, you know, what their real plan would be is in kind of conflict with what, you know, they're, they're going to, they're going to have a difficulty doing what he just said, you know, under this. And I agree, if, if open-air market is, is allowed with the CUP anyway, you'd still have to get that. So it may need to be a CUP across the whole property to allow that, and then, and then, you know, do the, do the phased approach. But I, I go back to what member Barry just said. It, it truly may be a PD the right way to go, so we can see a master plan of what your vision is going to be, understanding that it's not going to happen overnight, understanding that it's going to take anywhere from two to five or longer years in process to, to get there. But if we had the roadmap heading in that direction, and here's what we're talking about, I think that would give a better comfort level for people to know what, where it's headed. Obviously, economies change and, you know, all of those kind of things. And so PDs need to be written where we can morph and change with the, with the market. You know, I, you know, obviously, the market is there. It's, it's been there, like you said, it's been there since 1968. You're trying to improve it. I personally would like to see us figure out how we help him improve it faster, not be a stonewall in his, in his way. And I'm not saying we're intentionally doing that. It, it's our code and our process that's, that's causing this. Lawrence, the, the order, I guess, on the legal action, was that with the owner or was that with the property?
That was with the property.
Okay.
Oh, okay. It, it had both, because it locked in nonconforming structures and nonconforming uses. And then it bound the property owner from expanding those nonconforming structures or uses.
So would a, would a PD allow us to basically revisit that order and, and do something fresh and new, so we didn't have that, that legal action?
So using the examples of what we've heard about tonight with some of the phases, commercial, open-air amusement, kiddie rides, that is not allowed in the M1 district. That is not allowed inside the current order. That's not one of the uses. But that could be allowed under the GC district.
Right.
Replacing some of the structures that are there now. If they were to take those down, any new structures are going to have to comply with the M1 district requirements. And they might not be able to, to put those structures up where the current ones are, definitely not in the same methodology that the current structures are located. So that, that would be, I think, an example of a barrier.
That's a hindrance to being able to clean up the property.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's with the, Mayor, with the plan development, you could, say you started with a M1 base, but then you could cherry pick certain GC uses and include in that as well. So you can, you can, you know, as they said, talk about what they want to do, where they want to go, and make sure those uses are allowed. But then also make sure there's buffer requirements, look and design, you know, so that, that quarter becomes, I think, what they want and what we want it to look like.
Okay. Well, the question is, is there cost development? Sure. I mean, because you, you have to master plan and design this whole thing. So it, it comes into design, not full design, but it comes into your master planning and, and all that. And writing the PD doc is where your cost is. I think we've gotten better over the last several years of helping people through that. So it's, it's not overly cost-effective or overly costly, but a little bit more cost-effective. So it, it's a, it's a tough, not a tough sell, it's a tough deal because, as kind of stated, I think we've been a little bit of the roadblock just because of the way it's set up. I don't think anybody's intentionally done that. I think our, our process has been a little bit of a roadblock. So it hasn't happened as fast as you want to do. It certainly hasn't happened as fast as some of your investors wanted to do. So I think we need to figure out, and I, I would be certainly up for whatever we can do to help this property owner, help clean up this property sooner rather than later, get, show some, show some movement, so people can then see, yeah, it's happening. It's clearly on our front doorstep, whether it's industrial, it's not going to be industrial, even if you wanted to for years, okay? It's going to be in a nonconforming use for a long time to come. And so I think it behooves us as a community on our front doorstep on 35 to work with this applicant to figure out how we can make it look better sooner, not, not make it difficult on them. That, that's my two cents. So you started to say something here a minute ago. It takes a supermajority. I hear two no votes. So PD is going to be the way to go. Right. So I'm ready. Okay.
Coza?
I agree with that. I feel your pain. I've been in business since 65, and anytime I have to do something, I have to go through the ZBA process. So I understand what you're going through.
Anything else?
Mayor, real quick here. So I guess what's the guide path that we're going to advise?
Well, it, it sounds like we don't have a vote to overcome the supermajority, or yeah, to have a supermajority to, to approve it. So the advice would be, go do a, go do a PD, come back, and let's, let's work through it. And I would, and I would ask that we, you know, work with them as quickly as we can. Obviously, there's processes and deadlines and all that kind of stuff to go through. But that, that's what I would propose. It's kind of what I'm hearing. But I think that gives you the path forward. And we write your own, basically, what, you know, what happens with the PD is you write your own zoning classification. As John said, we could have a base zoning of M1. So if one day you sell it and just want to close it, we have a base zoning of M1 that we can revert back to. We can put things in place in that PD to allow you to move forward with everything that you're planning to do. And it, it's a little bit of time and effort upfront, but once that's done, then it's, we move it forward. You may have to amend the PD in five or eight years because you didn't think of something, and you want to come back and go, that would be a great fit here. But that's, that's a process with us. It's not going through the ZBA. It's not going through all of that. It's a process back with us and the, and the planning and zoning. I think planning and zoning would be up for a PD because you would then see, break the whole thing open and show them what you want, ultimately want to have with the process or with the property. So Mayor Protim's right. I don't think the votes are here to overcome the P&amp;Z. But I think you're seeing the spirit of the council saying, let's work with you on a PD, get this property where people in Pearland will be proud of it, not hide their eyes as they drive by, you know, that type of thing. So we want to see a strong corner right there.
Mayor, if I could just say for sure, I support what the mayor just said. I think that is the best pathway forward for you. And I just want you to understand, as the mayor said, you know, my, my comments are, again, looking back on the, the comments on the P&amp;Z meeting, you know, I wanted to make sure you came in here and felt like we wanted to work with you to deliver, obviously, a product that's good for you, but also something that's really good for our city. And this is, this is a very contentious spot in our city. But I, I see, you know, some promise on the horizon to, to bring something nice here. And I, I think that the land development route seems to be a good fit for this. And so I would very much support that and just reiterate what the mayor said.
Good deal. Any other questions, comments? I'm going to close this public hearing and move to business item number four. Member Hernandez, would you present that, please?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Consideration possible action. First reading of ordinance number 2000M-228. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. With head staff report and questions, comments from council. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Cade?
No.
Member Barry?
No.
Member Owens?
No.
Member Coza?
No.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
No.
Member Kim Card?
No.
The motion fails seven to zero.
All right. And, and again, I think, as, as mentioned, that's not a overall negative vote. We want to work with you to get this property where it needs to be, where I know you want it to be. So let's get to work. And I think you have a commitment from us that we'll roll our arms, our sleeves up and get to work with you. All right? Thank you. All right. Moving forward, public hearing number five. Mohammed, I'm to you.
Thank you. Public hearing number five, request by Nathan Doe, applicant on behalf of VNDO Holdings LLC order for approval of a zone change for approximately 9.747 acres of land from Cullen Mixed Use District or C-MU District to General Commercial GC. General location at 1855 Cullen Parkway. Again, this is a zone change from Cullen Mixed Use District to GC District for approximately 10 acres of land. This is the zoning map, and it shows the property being located within this larger Cullen Mixed Use District. It is surrounded by this SR12 Residential District to the east. Cullen Parkway is designated as Corridor Overlay District. These are views of the existing property developed with these buildings from several years back. And the Planning and Zoning Commission took this public hearing on July 18, and a motion to prove this request from CMU to GC failed. We approved by a vote of one to three, with Commissioner Forte supporting to prove this also constitute a negative recommendation. And so supermajority will be required by the City Council to approve this zone change. The applicant has indicated that they intended to rezone this property to GC, is to allow small businesses located within the subject property to obtain proper occupancy permit. And that concludes staff report.
All right. Thank you, Mohammed. Is the applicant present? Okay. Do you have a presentation for us? Please just give us your name and address for the record, and appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to see if I know how to use this computer here. Do you want to show you?
Joe's coming over to help you.
Yeah. So I'm just going to jump to the end of the staff report. And I'm picking up from there. Okay, so basically, the staff report, you know, staff does not object to this property to be rezoned to GC. But we have a, a, the city is updating the comprehensive plan for the futures, and that's supposed to be done close to the end of fall or close to the end of the year. And so we don't know what this area will, might change to, or the city planner might have some vision for this area. But just a little bit of history on this property, it was zoned GC on the 2016 city zoning map. So if you looked, the color is, it's right here. Let me see if I can make it bigger. Let me see if I can make it bigger. So the property is right here. If you can see the, the mound, it's got a little pink color. And that is, uh, it used to be, uh, it used to be, uh, general commercial. And that's the property right there. So for some reason, um, uh, on the, I guess I'm, I'm assuming on the current, uh, city planning map, it is zone, uh, CMU. And this, uh, CMU zoning, it is, uh, you can see right here, uh, the, this across red and yellow is very restrictive, uh, is a development killer because, um, uh, it's supposed to give consideration to some residential use that were along Cullen boulevards. But along Cullen Boulevard from, uh, huge ranch up to, um, um, a hard, there are hardly any houses left standing now. Uh, in fact, I count maybe four and, uh, one of the houses, uh, is abandoned. So, um, uh, I bought the property about three years ago, uh, from Mr., uh, Gilbert Allison. Maybe some of you knew him. Um, he passed away now due to COVID. But so I'm picking up the torch and, uh, um, uh, the current zoning, uh, some of the tenant, they unable to get occupancy permit because the, the usage permitted under this CMU, uh, zone, uh, very restrictive. It's geared toward more residential. I could have a, uh, animal market there, but not a workshop. So the, the two building was built in 1991 and they are metal buildings. They are basically, uh, office warehouse type of buildings. Uh, it's set up for a little, uh, office and a warehouse or workshops. So when the, uh, 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 perfection, uh, perceptive tenant or the current tenants, they tried to get, uh, occupancy permit. Uh, most of the time they unable to because, because of the zoning. So that's why I'm asking you, uh, to change the zoning to GC. Uh, that would allow for the tenant to get proper, uh, occupancy permit and any future development, uh, that I will do on this property because I intend to build more buildings. The same, um, same type, uh, obviously you have an overlay. I understand the hat, you know, the front need to be pretty. That's fine. Uh, but to, you know, build more building, put more investment in, um, and have it, having this restriction on there, uh, isn't going to work. So if you, uh, if you, um, uh, you really, if you want to see, uh, this, uh, area to grow, you know, to prosper and you already spent $30 million to widen my heart from Cullen out to McCaw, uh, this area, it poised to grow. So, uh, I'm, uh, I'm just asking you for my property, but in the future, there might be other properties owners that come before you and they would have the same problem. So, um, uh, uh, I guess that what, that concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you. Uh, we may have some questions for you here in just a minute, but we appreciate your, uh, your presentation and thank you for being here tonight. So with that, we'll move to those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request and, uh, go to the podium, give your name and address in three minutes. Second request, those wishing to, uh, speak for or against this proposed request. And third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing no one moving in that direction, we'll move to, uh, questions, comments and concerns from city council. Anyone have anything? Member Coza?
Thank you for coming out, Mr. Doe. Um, as far as, uh, you made comments that, uh, you've had tenants that couldn't get a certificate of occupancy. What, uh, type businesses were they in? What were they denying?
Uh, we have a lawnmower repair shop and that's considered, uh, appliance repair. And for some reason that use is not even permitted under, uh, industrial, uh, or, um, or business. It has to be general commercial. So, and then how, or we have a, um, uh, uh, third party Amazon shipping receiving, uh, company. Basically they use it as a warehouse, shipping and receiving and office warehouse also not permitted under CMU. And it's permitted under GC.
All right. Thank you.
So, um, John, help me. What, what a couple of things. One, was the zoning map correct that he put up here in 16 that showed this to be general commercial?
As we understand it, that was prior to the adoption of the last comprehensive plan, which saw this changed to the Cullen Mixed Use District.
Did we change it to CMU?
So we changed it to CMU based on, um, the amalgamation of uses on that street as specific, uh, zoning district was created kind of to house what was there and kind of what was foretold.
Okay. So what, uh, and, cause I think the nature of Cullen is changing right in front of us. Uh, I think member Owens and I were on council when we created the Cullen Mixed Use District because you did have, uh, this was a newly annexed area, hadn't been in the city a long time. So you had a mix of uses between residential and some business and some industrial. You just kind of had all this coming together. So we created the CMU just to kind of have some compatibility, especially with the residential side of things, knowing that as more and more growth came out here, and certainly as Cullen got widened to four lanes, it would be a transition. Uh, most of those residential areas would be, you know, sold off and turned into more of a commercial. So I'm, I'd, I'd be interested to know what we met, we might see in the comprehensive plan because I, I, I think the nature of this corridor is, is changed rapidly in the last 15 years. So, um, and it, that may be what is needed to move in this direction versus a mixed use district.
No, definitely. I, I think, um, initial discussions are finding a better home for these lots that offer, uh, better theme of development.
Yeah.
And so, um, is that commercial versus a residential? Uh, I would say with what we've seen on Cullen, probably commercial, but I think what the commission wanted to do was say, we're in the middle of this work and we haven't finished it. We haven't made a recommendation. Uh, should be before council, hopefully in October. Um, and, and that's, they kind of want to see what the final outcome was.
Okay. Questions, comments? Member Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have any idea what that's going to come back as on the comprehensive plan?
I couldn't tell you right now, sir. They, they haven't voted on, uh, specifics of that level, so I wouldn't want to speak for the commission.
I guess based on your question, does that mean that say we vote and approve it tonight or we're going to change it in the comprehensive plan?
Yes. So if you, if you voted to approve this tonight, then we would take that back to, um, the commission, the, the CPAC, which is the committee that's helping draft the document and our consultants, let them know that, that a decision was made and put that in the evaluation of what the thoughts were for that recommendation for that area and decide if that, if that's where it was going or do we need to reconsider based on this new zoning?
He's got about a quarter of the property in play right now. So he's got, you know, 75% of the property could be developed into more business park. I think that is your ultimate goal is to, to add more business park to the nine plus acres.
Yes, yes. It's a 10 acre and, uh, only two acres are the two building there now.
Right. Right. So you've got, you've got a lot of, uh, opportunity in front of you. So, yeah, I, I don't, you know, it's up to you guys how you want to, you know, proceed tonight. I certainly wish we had a better feel for what the comprehensive plan was going to be so we could dispense of a, of a good decision tonight. And it's not necessarily dictating what the comprehensive plan is going to be, but it would be falling in line with where we think it's going to go. Um, you know, again, I think, you know, Cullen itself with McCard Road just to the north here, McCard Road going all the way extending, you know, this is going to be a major corridor. It's certainly a major corridor already, north and south. It, that corner up there while McCard Road itself is not being, uh, on the comprehensive plan is not being, uh, designed to have a lot of, you know, inline retail, you know, all the way up and down the corridor. You're going to have some, some nodes. There's going to be a large node here at Cullen and, and, uh, and McCard. Of course, McCard is, is literally just, just north of this tract. So, um, you know, it, all of that infrastructure is what's changing the, changing this corridor quite a bit. So, um, I, I don't know that his, uh, then you get into GC and it's every allowable use in GC is allowed there. Um, while CMU, it, it was designed to pare it back because it wanted to be compatible between, you know, the business uses and the, and the residential uses. Uh, it's the reason why it was designed that way, but, you know, we opened it up to GC and it's opened up to everything that's, that's in there.
Right.
Really the options.
And not to mention Dawson High School is right there.
Dawson, yeah, is cat, you know, cross street and just south. You got a large church next door, um, and, and all of that.
From 518 north, you go from retail right there at 518, go to the police station, you go to the
Cemetery.
Cemeteries. Then you go to neighborhood. Well, well, neighborhood and then, yeah, then, then you get up into the high school this. I mean, it's a pretty broad range of what's in there right now.
Yeah.
I don't, but I don't necessarily see any more residential going in.
No.
I don't either. I agree with you.
I agree with that.
Would it make sense to table this tonight until staff could give us some indication on what the comprehensive plan is going to look like in this area? Then we could bring it back and dispose of this before the whole comprehensive plan. Cause I mean, I've got a landowner that's, that's saying, help me out.
Yeah.
And so that, I think, is that the
What timeframe would he be in?
Well, if it's going to come to us in October, it's August now, so we're talking two months ish.
Yeah.
What we could do is if you want to table for, till the next meeting, we could go meet with our consultants and, and see what their discussions with the CPAC and, and what they, you know, based on our public input and everything, what kind of they were leaning and we could come back and just say, you know, these were the thoughts.
And, and what he's saying is maybe in two weeks, we, we're, we're in the public hearing now. We got to get to the new business. We, we would postpone this for tonight.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Two weeks, come back, we'd have a better idea of what the conference. I'd like to know what the comprehensive plan is because we could dispense of this now and you don't have to wait two or three months. We can go ahead and get it done now with knowing where it's headed potentially.
Yeah.
Uh, it might be the right way to go. Any other questions, comments?
Uh, I just want to ask, what does it matter?
His, his, his request may be in line with what the comprehensive plan is going to be asking for. Don't know.
Or we can vote on it tonight and it's in line anyway.
Well, it, it, we can. We're talking two weeks.
Okay.
That's all. I mean, right now we're only talking two weeks. Any other questions?
I don't, I just don't want to bring something back. Talk, talk anymore about it if we don't have to. That's my point.
Mayor, not to confuse the issue, but I did want to say, uh, I heard that there were only two options on the table. Uh, another option is that there is a downgrade from GC to GB. If you didn't want to open it up to all GC issues, you can go to something less intense, which would be the GB use.
I think we can do that.
I don't know if that's something
But I think that's what we can do in two weeks. Again, we're talking about two weeks. We hear from the consultant. We, we can then either go with GC. We could talk with him about GB. We could have that decision.
Would you be open for a GB zone?
Uh, I will have to research that because, uh, I was intent on GC, so I didn't read much about the GB. Uh, but I would be open, I would be okay with, you know, if you want to table it for two weeks and we'll meet back here in two weeks and you get the thoughts on the comprehensive plan and we'd be more informed to make a decision.
Okay. I think that's a good course. Uh, any other questions, comments on the public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and move to new business item number five. Uh, member Cade, would you present that please?
So I'm moving to postpone it.
Or before you put it on the table, uh, I guess we'd have to put it on the table and do a formal postponement.
She can move.
Yes, Your Honor. Well, she, a motion to postpone can happen now.
Okay.
I move to postpone the first reading of ordinance number 200M dash 230 to the next regular meeting.
Yes.
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. It's not debatable. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Cade?
Yes.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Good deal. Um, thank you for that. We'll see you in a couple of weeks and we'll see where this, this heads. All right. We, we really appreciate you coming by.
Thank you. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. Quick mental note on the new business item number five is number 200M. It should have been 2000M in the caption.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, public hearing number six, this is a request by City of Pearland applicant for approval of, uh, proposed amendments to Unified Development Code, UDC ordinance number 2000T in accordance with section 111, uh, 41 of the Unified Development Code include amendments to chapter four, section 4243A fencing of the Unified Development Code to allow additional height for residential fences within the front yards of residential properties fronting on identified thoroughfares. Uh, the issue behind this is that the current regulations, uh, of the UDC do not permit residential fences within the, uh, required front yards of any single family or duplex residential lot, which is adjacent to a public street, except for decorative fences with openings, not less than 50% of the fence area and not exceeding four feet in height. So we're looking at, uh, potentially creating, uh, flexibility in the height for residential fences that is in, uh, uh, the front yards along, uh, uh, certain thoroughfares. Uh, so the proposed amendment will, uh, allow residential fences height to be increased to six, from four to six by right of residential property fronts on identified thoroughfare. And the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing on July 18. Uh, staff presented those proposed amendments, uh, to allow the height to be increased from four to six. Commission had no, uh, issues, uh, no comments about those changes and a motion to approve was passed by vote of four to one. And that concludes staff report.
All right. Thank you for that. Is the applicant, or we are the applicant, so
We are.
Staff and applicant is the same. Sorry. You get in, you get into the rut and here we go. So those wishing to speak, uh, we'll open it up to the public. Those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Go to the podium, give your name and address in three minutes. Second opportunity, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. And third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Next up, we'll move it to city council, questions, comments, concerns.
Mayor, I had one quick comment. This, um, a friend of mine who lives on Dixie Farm Road, um, wanted to put up a security fence, a six foot security fence. And the way the UDC was written, she had to go through, um, some specific drama to, to get it, um, approved, a variance. And I think it was a variance because it was in the UDC for a four foot fence. And she, it was a beautiful security fence that she wanted to build. And I think that this is a good thing. I think, um, approving this is a good thing.
That case is why we're doing this.
I, I know. I just wanted to, I didn't know if anyone else knew, so I wanted to tell the story. So thank you.
Very good. Anybody, anybody else, questions, comments?
Good question. On the setback on the front yards, um, I spoke to a, a citizen on McCard. I guess it's a 30 foot setback there and, and so I mean, she's
I guess it's a 30-foot setback there and, and so, I mean, she's losing a big chunk of her front yard that won't be able to be fenced in. What, is there any, um, is there anything to, to address that specifically when the neighbor's fences are all the way out to the, to the property line now? So she builds a new fence and it's got to be setback 30 feet? But now it can be six foot, so thank you for solving that.
Was her fence removed as part of the construction or she just took it down?
I don't think there's been one constructed.
Okay. Well, then she would have to meet the current rules. So, so hers, hers would have that, that small step, setback.
What's the, can you explain the reason for that?
It's for, realistically for entryway into like a driveway, you have a setback, it's for view sightline?
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we will close this public hearing and move to new business item number six. Member Barry, would you present that, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number 2000T dash 37, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We've had staff report and opportunity for questions and comments. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens? Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez? Member Cade?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Everybody okay? Does anybody need a break? We good? All right. Good deal. Moving on, Mr. Owens, we're going to present, if you would, present the consent agenda. I have received B as in boy, G as in golf, and H to be removed. Are there any other items to be removed? F as in franks. We'll just vote on all of them. So, if you'll, A through H, with the exception of B, F, G, and H.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Is Laney just, I'm certain that's when we do that. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Trying to write all these towards the end. All right, moving forward in our agenda, new business items continued. Mr. Coza, we'll back to you, item number seven, please.
Consideration and possible action, resolution number R2022 dash 184, so moved.
We have a motion and a second, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. You had the public hearing for the required five-year plan on the community development block grant consolidated plan. Tonight is for the action on that that's been drafted. Joel asked to say anything else for the record or?
No, sir, just here to answer any questions if there are any. Nothing else, sir.
All right, thank you for that. Number seven. Questions, comments from council? Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Sorry, made you wait for no questions, Joel. Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, thank you for that. Back to you, Mr. Kamkar, item number eight, please.
Consideration and possible action, resolution R2022 dash 178, so moved.
We have a motion and a second, staff report.
Looking forward to bringing to the community at the Shadow Creek Sportsplex, this all-inclusive playground that's been cooperative through state grants, city funds, and then the Pearland Parks Foundation. Council, recall, you awarded the actual equipment some months earlier and this is for the surface area, which is a separate contract. And so this is, was done separately to meet the procurement requirements, but ready to award that for the 575 to Lone Star, who I believe is the company that also got the playground equipment, so nothing added.
Good, that'll make it easy on construction. Do want to recognize, we've got members of our Forever Parks Foundation here, we have Kelly and Jeff, so we thank you guys for being here tonight and seeing this project and working on this and putting your heart and soul into it, so we really appreciate that. I remember Kamkar was glad you could make the motion on this as your wife is heavily involved with this as well, so it was a good opportunity to, to highlight that. This is going to be a showcase arc in our community when it's done, so it's going to be great. Any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Awesome, awesome. Mayor Protim, if you would present item number nine.
Thank you, Mayor, consideration and possible action, resolution R2022 dash 187, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, staff report.
This is a contract with Apache for delivery of our oil, I'm sorry, our fuel. We pay a certain set amount over the fluctuating market price, but we need to add to the contract and get us through the next time period here. This is, was put out for quotes and so Apache was the responsive bidder on that, nothing added.
All right, good deal. Questions, comments, concerns from council?
I just have one question. Is it possible that over, over the course of this contract period, we can kind of have negotiated rates or something? I'm just wondering because, well, just wondering because of inflated cost of fuel at this time.
So I'm sorry, you said negotiate what, rates?
Yeah.
So we, we pay whatever the rate is, it's set by the formula and we pay a little amount over that for the transport. So as it goes, as the price goes up and down, we're going to float with that.
All right, so it's like a future or something like that?
No, it, it's, it's set to an index and so we pay a fixed amount over whatever that index moves.
We basically pay current pricing.
Yeah.
I saw that, yeah.
Minus a, minus a little, all right. Right. So it's not a set price at any given time. So as it goes up and down, we, we either win or lose.
Kind of like a variable rate, that's kind of what I was thinking. You have a variable rate option every three months to just a thought.
No, that's what it does. That's, that's what it does now. Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, back to you, Mr. Hernandez, would you present item number 10?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that city council approve resolution number R2022 dash 180.
We have a motion and a second, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, we have first of two items when, in which we're formalizing and putting out there the upcoming budget process. This one is for the public hearings on the budget. It'll be on August 29th at 6:30 here in the chambers. And so by the action tonight, we will lock that in and then proceed with the required public notices for that. Nothing added.
All right, good deal. Setting our budget calendar in motion. Any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Ms. Cade, would you present item number 11 and I believe you have some specific language there to put on the table?
I do, thank you. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R2022 dash 179. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate not to exceed .628765 cents, which is effectively a 15.79% increase in the tax rate and placing on the agendas of September 12th, 2022 and September 26th, 2022, regular city council meetings, consideration of the proposed fiscal year 2022 and to 2023 tax rate and setting a public hearing on the tax rate for August 29th, 2022 at 6:30 PM.
We have a motion and a second. Now, staff report so we can explain how this
So, thank you for the opportunity, Mayor. You'll recall, this is part of the statutory process. There is this notice required in which the council has to advertise the maximum rate, which will be considered, and this also has advertising requirements, and so that's why the necessity to put that out there now, even though you just got the budgets on Friday and we're going to have our first public hearing, I'm sorry, discussion about that on Saturday upcoming. But this sets the maximum to which you can go below that when you actually get into the, the process. The 628765 is actually just below the voter approved rate, but that's the rate, the 628 is what we've based the budget upon in the recommendation. And so this will give you the opportunity to have those discussions and dialogue without going over that. And like I said, you can always go lower that once you go through that if you need to, but recommended is at that number.
It puts a ceiling on it, doesn't put a floor. And if I'm understanding this, the, the .628765 rate would be an effective right around seven cent, 6.9 or seven cent drop from the current tax rate.
Yep, 7.2, something like that, so.
Yeah, we're at 70.
Seventy and change.
Yeah, 70 and change, so this would, this would actually be a rate reduction, but the way the formula works out, we have to have the wording in there of an increase because it's above the, what, no new revenue rate?
Yeah, and the note, I mean, we can get into that more Saturday, but the no new revenue rate actually brings in less dollars to the city operations because they count debt and that than what we're doing now, so.
So it's not truly no, no new revenue. And I know we'll get into this through the budget, public, public hearings and the budget discussions, but at this rate, the .628765 rate, if adopted, what are we seeing with most homeowners that are homesteaded?
Right, so this rate for the homesteaded properties would, in all the samples we gave, would have an actual decrease in the dollar amount that those would pay, even with, even if the value went up the full 10% to the cap, this rate would actually lower that somewhat, so.
Just kind of wanted that out there for people to hear that. So if you're homesteaded, your max cap is 10%, you would still see a, what we're seeing is a physical drop in the dollars paid in taxes. Which means businesses and non-homestead property are certainly picking up the difference. With that, questions, comments, concerns from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, we will move back to then matters removed from consent agenda and I'm going to ask, where did we finish off? A, Member Barry, would you present item B as in Barry?
Sure, Mayor, thank you very much. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R2022 dash 157, so moved.
We have a motion and a second, staff report.
Apropos for the workshop that you held earlier this, earlier this evening, you're aware that in the life of the building, the air handling system has reached its, towards its ends of life. The brand name that has the Dektron, so just for a point of reference, went through a process and we need professional services, obviously, to design that, had leaf engineering who we've worked with on our, our backup power generations and worked well with them. And so this starts off that process to scope that out and assess that and give us plans, nothing added.
All right, I believe, um, Member Kamkar pulled this.
Yes, so we talked earlier, I guess, five o'clock, so five hours ago, sorry. We talked about all those capital commitments that are coming up in the next two years. Essentially, this is starting that process. That, that a fair assessment?
This is one of those items for sure. The air handling system is one of those that was identified in the building assessment study that, you know, we run the risk of failing if, you know, I'm not trying to be scaremongering, but that's just a fact, so yes, this is one of those items that was in that.
I, I just, we had a robust conversation about what do we want to do on maintaining? Do we want to do something else? And what I have learned in my few years, I've paid attention, our number one tactic is, well, you already spent this money, you got to keep going. And it's unfortunate, but it's been very effective and it's neatly buried here. And so I, I really am concerned, you know, that we start saying, well, you put 400,000 or 800, or you pick a number and now you need to go 6.2 million. And so my, my motion would be to table until at least we get through the first budget hearing, until we at least have some level of discussion around what do we want to do. 6.2 million dollars is real money. I understand the other concerns, but we, we have to be long-range planners and stewards and I don't have a satisfactory vision from, I haven't heard, plus have a decisive decision around what do we want to do with that facility. So, I'm going to make a motion to postpone till at least the beginning of the second reading.
Did we get?
Second reading of the budget?
Yes.
Was there a motion to postpone until the second reading of the budget?
Okay.
You get a second, we can't discuss. That means we can't discuss, we have to vote on a postponement.
Okay.
You what? Vote it down and then, I guess, anyway. Madam Secretary, we're going to, voting on a motion to postpone this until the second budget public hearing?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Okay, making sure I got that right. I did hear you and I know it's after 10, so.
Did have a question.
Madam Secretary, we're going to vote on postponement. Is everybody clear on what we're voting on? We're going to postpone this item until we've had a discussion to vet it through the budget and bring it back after the second public hearing.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
No.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, move to
Six one.
Oh, six one, six one.
Oh, he said no.
One to six.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Moving to item F, Member Owens, would you present it, please?
Okay, hold on. Consideration possible action resolution number R 2022 dash 177, so moved.
Second. And the staff report?
We have a contract for kennel cleaning services at our animal shelter. And this would be prospective for up and, when we're up and running back there. But the size and the scale of that was sufficient that we're crossing the threshold past 50. So need to get a contract in place so that we are able to have this cleaning services. Nothing to add.
All right. With that, we'll move to Member Hernandez. He was the one that pulled this.
Thank you, Mayor. So you may have kind of touched on that, Clay, but I just was curious with the most recent news we've gotten, how that's going to potentially impact this. I mean, is it?
When we need the cleaning, we'll start cleaning. We're back at the old facility now. So this would have that contract in place.
But that's specific for the new facility, though? Is that correct?
We use them now with the existing one. I think when we wrote this, it was planned that we would be in this one. So we'll just have them continue at the existing facility.
Okay, that was, all right, that's it. That's all I got, Mayor.
Any other questions, comments? Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Owens.
Aye.
Member Coza.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone.
Aye.
Member Kamkar.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Barry.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Background, Member Coza, if you'd present item G.
Consideration of possible action resolution number R 2022 dash 182, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Sir. As part of the CIP that you adopted, this is, has the preliminary engineering report to contract with that, with ADG, and that would be for the future public safety driver training and firearms range facility. That would give us the dollar amounts that we could then have for future budgeting. And report will be back in January, so the timing should be good. So you could consider part of that potentially for your May issue if you so choose. But that, that would be the timing so we could go on that and have that available. Nothing to add.
Good deal. We'll move to, Member Kamkar, I think you're the one that pulled this.
Yes. I'm, I'm first of all thankful to the staff. They've worked exceptionally hard. I think they went out, if the chief would say that, to Round Rock. And I think they may have looked at some other facilities. And they're essentially bringing in the group that will assist on FA 2502, which is one of my favorite projects, which is the indoor range and the driving course. The question I had on this is, in the packet that was sent out, in the list of the projects in the CIP, I want to say to you, the first book, it's the first or second, right? One of those books, the fire facility was inclusive, and I think ranked number 24, 25 on that list. But the rate, the driving range, not the driving range, the driving course was not. And I'm wondering, does this tether, how do those two tether going before the voters in May?
The fire, Fire Station 7?
No, 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 no. This is.
Firing range, he's.
There's a firing range and a drive.
Oh, they said fire. I heard you say fire. I'm sorry.
Yeah. So this is the facility and the driver training, and that's what it says in the agenda. And so I'm just wondering, are those two things going to be tethered in May?
No, they don't have to be. We're going to get the numbers in the back. We already talked about developing how it could be sequenced, if you want to do one before the other. It's a big, big dollar amount. So this will be, give you the information, make that decision.
Would love to do both.
Most love to what?
Love to do both. And we'll get to talk about that right here upcoming, but I would love to be able to put both of those. If we're going, because we always get the economies of scale when we do more, that's what the staff always tells me, we get a better price if we do it now and we do a lot more. And so I would kind of love to have both of those happening at the same time.
Well, you, this will start that process. So, I mean, I don't know why you'd want to commit to spend 30 million bucks in that May issue without having the whole package right now.
Okay. I'm just putting it out in the air. I'm trying to, that's what my therapist says, put it out in the air, put it out in the world. So we're just trying to put it out in the world and hopefully we can do some affirmations.
Wouldn't want to be in that room.
So. I, I, I'm just surprised that we're saying we don't want to spend money now. So I'm, I'm, I'm excited. So.
Well, I don't, I don't think I hear anybody saying we don't want to do this, or we do want to do this. I think what I'm hearing is we need to go do the preliminary engineering. So we understand what the true cost is and true scope is. And I think that's an appropriate thing to do. So.
I'm very supportive.
Good deal. And we may decide as a, as a group to split it, or we may decide to put it all together. Or we may decide to delay it, or we may decide to move it up. So I think we get the PR and we get that done. Any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Coza.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone.
Aye.
Member Kamkar.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Barry.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Good deal. Item H, Mr. Kamkar, would you present that, please?
Sure. Consideration possible action, R 2022 dash 183, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
This is just a formal acceptance to paper up. The state program is relatively small, I think just over $20,000 that Representative Thompson helped secure through TechDOT. And this is another piece, I believe was one or two, one mobile and one fixed potential unit for the automatic license plate readers program. Nothing to add.
All right. Back to you, Mr. Kamkar.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm super thankful for the staff working on this item. I believe we got a memo or an email recently that just in the first two months of operation, I think they recovered over a quarter million dollars in, in vehicles. They, they took some guns off the street. I think they've had several arrests come off of this. And I feel like the program is working. And I just wanted to make sure that it got its due. I'm glad that we're getting the state to bring in some dollars to assist with that. And it's working to keep our community all safer, which is a great thing.
And so far with the, with the cameras, I think we've shown some successes. So they're, they're certainly doing their, doing their job, picking up things. Our public safety folks are out there. It's pretty impressive when we can deploy our drones and have drone on site within a couple of minutes and officers on site a couple of minutes after that. And what, from start to finish was 12 minutes or some number like that, and with an apprehension and a, and a vehicle recovered. So that's, that's pretty awesome when you see that at work. And that's technology working. It's not necessarily boots on the ground. Ultimately, we had to have boots on the ground to, to secure it, but using technology to its, to its best, being smarter, not necessarily working harder. I think that's good. Chief, send along to those folks just how rapid they were able to deploy the drones and do all that as a result of these cameras, having them in place and recover a car within a minute. So, good deal. Any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Kamkar.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Barry.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Aye.
Member Coza.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, we will move forward to other business. There is none. We'll move to the last item, which is mayor council issues for city council discussion, update discussion on the advanced meter infrastructure, or AMI project. With that, I'll turn it first to staff, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to give an overview of the program from a holistic standpoint, a little bit bigger perspective, and then representatives from Itron specifically are here, but Mr. Upton will walk you through this. That's right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Since several of you are new to council this year, there's a process I'd like to just go through and give an update on, from the background of the advanced metering infrastructure from the beginning when we started to where we are now. With that, we'll do that background. We'll do a project update. We'll talk about some next steps. And then Itron, represented by Justin Roche and Brad Balzar, Balzair, will be here to provide a brief presentation as well. So with that, I'd like to just kind of go start with our background. So in 2016, we proposed this project and included with the TWDB, or Texas Water Development Board, project for the surface water treatment plant, tying both of those projects together to advance funding opportunities. In June of 17, we did a request for expressed, expression of interest, or an REFI. Basically, what that was is putting it out in the street to have individual firms help us guide and develop a process for us so we can do a request for proposal. That, all that information and those interviews were taken together. And then an RFP, or request for proposal, was issued in August of 17. In November of 17, Itron provided the best value. One of those items that we took a look at was we wanted open end system, the ability to be able to utilize multiple meters within our network that would be built versus a proprietary system, which we were currently under at that time. Itron provided best and final offer after negotiations at $15.9 million. In March of 18, council then approved that contract after several months of contract negotiations, set for about a 17 month project. And then in May of 18, we began the notice to proceed. Between May and January, as we've noted in previous memos, is that there was some discussions going back and forth with regards to implementation of technology, working with our IT department. It took a little longer than anticipated in the integration. So at that time, there was a time extension given. In February of 19, Itron submitted an propagation study after multiple revisions, called for a total of 56 CGR locations. And while the bid was only set for an additional eight for the city, those were borne in their cost by Itron. April of 19, we started in meter installations. From April 19 to October of, of 2019, meter installation was underperforming. Itron hired a second contractor to augment the project, to be able to add and continue to install more meters at a higher installation rate. The final propagation study confirmed the 56 locations. This utilized the existing cities, 27 that we had, plus an additional 26. Meter installation was completed April of 2021, with the contract being supposedly completed in February 20 of, February 28 of 2020, in that the project is in liquidated damages. In January of 2022, the final 26 poles were completely installed. So currently, moving forward with our project update right now, December of 2021, staff, this is city staff, started transitioning meters over to the network. We worked in high confidence areas as working with Itron and their studies of those areas that we would have that high confidence, that connection to the network. Those are in cycles 13 and 14. We completed, but then we discovered that we had a meter transition concerns, meaning that they were not transitioning as fast, which was then causing issues of having to do drive by reads at a slower rate. With that, we put a pause on continued transition. So we've only completely turned over cycles 13 and 14 to the network mode. And we are continuing to have do both drive by and also AMI reads in those areas, being in a slower read, but still collecting and maintaining all the data. Whereas cycles 11 and 12, we're doing drive by the old way. In January of 2022, staff, city manager's office, Itron, and the mayor all met together to discuss the project and approach to continue, continue the dedication and move forward of trying to get this project completed. During that time, a discussion about what's called point to point. Itron will have further discussion on detail of what that means, but that basically means that one meter can read the meter next to them, if it's unregistered, and then be able to piggyback that read. But it's only one to one. It's not a one to five or one to 10. It is one to one. During that time afterwards, from February to August, identified 14 antenna upgrades and six additional connected grid router poles, poles and connected grid routers. With that, the installation of the 14 antenna is completed. Six additional poles have been installed. However, we are awaiting the CGRs that they have shipped. They should be here later this week so we can install and activate those additional six poles. In March of 2022 through May of 2022, Itron developed an area of 379 meters to test that point to point connectivity. That firmware was pushed out. We did have a problem where they were pushed out successfully, but then they weren't reading back and forth. We found a code that took us a little while to go through. Both our IT staff and Itron were going code by code and found a duplicate code in there that was preventing that. Once that was determined and fixed, the implementation was immediately resolved. With that, during the test area from May to July, the firmware was successful. It was a read rate went from 97% to 100% for seven days. So that's a, I know it's a 3% increase, but that means we have 100% readability over a seven day period. So continuing with that in July of this year, is that we have now started the push of firmware out to all the meters that have registered in the network. We are continuing to analyze, evaluate, and perform those meter connections. It's a topic we talk about consistently every week at our meetings. We have multiple meetings per week, actually. It's continually being reviewed and analyzed to make sure that we are optimizing it, adding what's necessary, and continue to move forward. What's happened as a result of the additional review and solutions that have been developed is that we will continue to probably have a few more additional connected grid routers and poles. And we're also looking at the potential for some cellular endpoints located around the fringe of the city where it doesn't make sense to put another pole in, just to put a pole in. But it's not fiscally responsible. We can do it with a handful of cellular endpoints that tie in. So staff has been working with them and setting up that Verizon account as well that we have. We have been connect, really concentrating on cycles 13 and 14, which is, I'll show you a map of those areas in just a moment, to be able to focus and make those remedies happen and then take that information and apply it to cycles 11 and 12 so we can transition smoothly. Of those we pushed out, we've had about 19,800 meters, approximately 48% of the system that have been in communication with the infrastructure, in continued transition. I mean, as a result, that's where we are in our transition. We've been put that rest on hold. But 19,800 meters have connected and are reading and are being pushed, the deployment of that point to point network during this period of time. And then moving forward with that, hopefully we'll then reach out to those that have not connected, get their reads, and then up our quantity from 19,800. We are continuing to read. And the balance of our meters, those that have not connected are being read by the drive by system, where staff drives the streets, picks up the information the typical way that we've done for several years. There has no been, there has not been any loss of information, but the collection of data in the drive by mode is not as efficient as it will be when we are able to go fully on network. So I wanted to put these pictures up real quick, just to show you what we've been tracking and what, with the help of our IT department, is put together for us. And this is the city as a whole, green being connected, small little green dots being connected. The red dots are the meters that have not connected. And then the big green round dots are all of our connected grid router towers that are reading the data. Those that are in orange are the areas that we're having new ones installed and awaiting the shipping of those, of the actual connected grid router that receives the data. So taking a look further, taking a look at cycle 14, which is the Shadow Creek area west of 288. We have about 10,500 meters. We have about 3,700 that have not connected. And like I said, as they push out this information, the firmware update and point to point, we're hoping to be able to collapse that and get that less and less is the plan. An example in the other area, cycle 13, about 66% has been connected of the 8100. We still have one pole that needs to become activated. And then that'll help continue to reduce the amount that have not registered. So continuing on those next steps is the activation of those new six poles once the equipment arrives. Complete the firmware update on the meters that are registered to the system. Activate the firmware for those cycles 13 and 14 so that we can then start reaping the benefits of the firmware update and the point to point connection. Continue the evaluation installation of any additional poles as necessary as determined by the network analysis. And based on the success and the information that we're doing in cycles 13 and 14, we are analyzing and transitioning that information over to cycles 11 and 12 to get ahead of this and be able to implement it from there. I did want to mention a little bit about Water Smart that has been talked about. That's an app that customers will have that information and be able to see what they're using on a regular basis. And I'm going to say similar to what you could get from your energy provider. We have been working on this. We are using that software to assist customers. We are looking to roll this out as the cycles are complete. It's kind of hard to be able to have one that's on it, and then maybe your neighbor next door is not on it because they haven't connected. So we want to be able to make sure that we've completed that one cycle, push that out to that one cycle, then move it to the next and do what makes sense. So with regarding to contractual requirements, all the meters four inch and smaller have been completed with solid state meter installations. For meters larger than four inch, that's six, eight, 10, and 12, the registers have been changed out to be in compliance, and then also endpoints have been installed so that we can read that information. As solid state meters are manufactured, they're actually out for sale right now on eight inch and six inch. We'll be looking to purchase those and test those out, and then slowly make that change as those solid state meters come for those size. Converted all meters to endpoints that's, with Itron has completed, integration to New World's completed. The contract is 99% radio frequency or RF coverage and 95% register read rate. And then continuing through this process in the contract is continued system evaluation and optimization to be able to meet these requirements. And finally, my last slide before I turn it over to Itron to give their brief presentation and then open up to any questions or comments, is that the original contract as stated above was $15.9 million. We did have a small change order early on for about $10,000. That happened at the very first of the month, first very start of the beginning of the project. We've paid 13.6 to date. Original contract time is for 541 days, with the addition due to working together to implement the security and the software upgrades with the IT, with our IT department. We added 106 days. So that put the contract completion February 28, 2020. Currently, we're anticipating right now December of 2022, that currently today is 890 days in liquidated damages, and the balance is located below as of today. So with that, at this time, if you don't mind, council, mayor and council, I'd like to turn this over to Itron, represented by both Brad and Mr. Justin, to be able to present just a little bit where they are, and then turn it over to, back to the city manager, and then any questions or comments.
Thank you, Robert. My name is Brad Balzer. I'm a delivery director for Itron North America. I work on implementing projects, and typically I'm the project sponsor, and have program managers that implement those projects. Justin is the program manager for this effort that we have going on here. Excellent summary, Robert. Thank you. Thank you, council for having us. But we're here, we're not, we're not walking away. And quite frankly, looking at it on that one slide that Robert just showed, it's. It's embarrassing. Itron's not proud of that. We, we have some self imposed challenges that that caused the delays. Others that were completely unforeseen during some challenging times that we've experienced. But we haven't left and you can see we are incurring some big expenses staying around and making this work. I've been with Itron for twenty, going on twenty-four years and Itron has a reputation for winning the customers over, no matter how long it takes, staying with the customers and keeping them current. While the project is the milestone that everybody looks at here and says, let's get this project done and behind us. From Itron's vantage point, we have a relationship that's going to last fifteen years after the project's complete. And we want you to get the value out of that project, not just what you wanted to get from building the project, but some things that we don't even know about in this industry today. We're learning continuously about ways to improve efficiencies for water operations, how to find leaks, how to optimize the resources to go and take care of those leaks. There are things we're working on in this industry that we'll look forward to helping Pearland achieve and quite frankly, use some of the input from you folks and the data that you folks have that we can, we can leverage and maybe build some apps to help grow that part of the business. There were delays and I don't want to be an apologist here. I do want to apologize to you folks for, for the embarrassing slide that Robert just had to show us, but from, from our standpoint, we are here to make it right. We're going to fix things. We're showing progress on a regular basis. We're proud of that progress, albeit too late. But Justin will walk through some of those slides on where we are, show some of the positives. And he's also going to speak to some of the challenges that we have. As I said, self imposed, we had contractor problems during our selection process. We had the hardware problems. Itron made some hardware, it had a glitch in it. We had to recall that, rebuild it and ship it back out. We had design problems. We have many of these projects across the country. We learned from those other early adopters modifications to our designs. So we had built and proposed a design to you folks during the, the initial bid process. And the start of the project came to realize it wasn't going to be the right way to go. It didn't have a long term success. So we redesigned it and we began deploying that. And subsequently, in this environment, we came up with some challenges. There are some places where we can put poles, other places where we cannot. And learning that, moving the network around caused some other movement. Again, self imposed, we should have saw through some of that, but, but you know, we look and say, we do this around the country and failed on that, in that regard. Things we couldn't control and still can't control, I'm afraid. We didn't see COVID coming. I don't think any of us did. And it caused a heck of a disruption in our resources, the ability to do work in the field. We thought that it would be short lived. We did not see a challenge with labor. We didn't see it coming. It certainly came. Our contractors had that trouble retaining labor and training labor. So we were going through an iterative process of, of bringing new people on, training them, trying to get the quality. And we did not see the supply chain disruptions that were stacked onto that. We're a technology company. The endpoints you have use the same chips that auto manufacturers are using. So we're competing to buy those chips to put into our endpoints. And it's, you know, it's a challenge today, yet again today, to try to get those chips to meet the forecast that we have. So quite frankly, we wrestle, Justin wrestles on an ongoing basis with, with our internal folks in supply chain, trying to move orders up. But what we find is we have committed shipment dates from our vendors that are, that are shipping parts for our assembly. And we just don't get them at the eleventh hour. Just would like you to know that, not, not making that an excuse, but these are the circumstances that we work in. So again, from my perspective, I sincerely apologize. We recognize our shortcomings. We have a plan to wrap this up. We're executing that plan. We'll continue to do so as we run into challenges within the plan. We meet with, and I meet personally with the project team weekly. So we meet, we discuss the status of the schedule and make adjustments as, as is necessary. With that, I'm going to have Justin step up and give an update on the
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for your time. Appreciate you letting us come in and be here. Probably repeat a little bit of information that Robert has shared. I'll, I'll try and be respectful of your time and go through a few things that may be a little bit quicker than planned. And then of course, we're here for as many questions as you have. So again, as Brad just stated, you know, we wanted to be here in person to reiterate our commitment. We reiterate our commitment and our long term partnership with Robert and the city of Pearland weekly and we will continue to do so. We have last met, I believe with a smaller group, Mr. Mayor with yourself and Brad in January and discussed some of the plans that we had moving forward. We have accomplished some of those items that we discussed. Again, speaking to the number of meters that we've got on the network and then the amount that we are reading those meters. You know, we're continuing to improve and hit the goals that we laid out in front of us, albeit a little bit slower than we planned. Hopefully that's a little bit better. We are using the system daily. The city of Pearland is using the system daily to build customers, to review data, to essentially complete the meter to cash cycle. Our cellular network, as Robert has mentioned, as a supplement to our connected grid routers has been configured with the help of city IT and our staff to get that ready for implementation of those cellular devices. The firmware upgrade, as Robert mentioned, the point to point connectivity is the key feature of that firmware upgrade. We continue to see positive results in our pilot area, which indicates that, you know, we are on the right track to move that out to the network. The challenges that we've faced here in the last few months, cycles thirteen and fourteen, as Robert mentioned, when we started to convert those cycles, saw some challenges in collecting the mobile meter data. You know, we want to reduce the amount of time that we're, we're picking up mobile collection data and obviously reduce the amount of workload that we're putting on the business unit. And so when we saw those challenges, we said, you know, collectively, we agreed to stop, evaluate what we needed to do to improve and then move forward, which is what we're doing today. That MR one firmware upgrade. We, we talk about firmware, we talk about the upgrade. It's some of your, I'm sure are familiar. For those who aren't, it's similar to the update that you get on your iPhone or your, your cell phone, you know, prompts for an upgrade. Essentially just gets us to the latest and greatest software that we're able to use. And that does include that point to point connectivity. As Robert mentioned, we do have the additional connected grid routers that have been proposed and laid out by our internal team. Those are going to be completed. Actually got confirmation in between the time that I talked to Robert and now that those have been delivered. And we will move forward with installation with those in the next week and a half to two weeks. We have seen some positive increase in the antenna modifications that we made. Increasing the coverage areas and reliability on those. In terms of some additional notes on the MR one firmware upgrade. Again, we have seen some early success in the pilot area, which is positive to see. We anticipated that success, so we're not, you know, celebrating that. We're recognizing it and moving forward. We do plan and are currently planning or actually underway with that firmware being spread out to the entire territory. So all of those available nineteen thousand or so endpoints that are on that network now are available to receive that message. And, and we'll be sending that out to activate there later in August. That firmware again will allow the endpoints to have a one to one relationship with another. So if I've got an endpoint on Justin Roach's home and one on Brad Balzer's home, my endpoint might be reading. For some reason Brad's is not. Mine will say, hey, Brad, come on along with me. I'll take you back and we'll get your data to the utility. We talked about cellular again, fringe coverage for us means not only to augment the physical territory, but some of the fringe coverage that is created by the network, the nature of the network, there's going to be areas, pockets of areas, whether it be, you know, landmarks that are preventing coverage, physical or manmade. You know, that's where we'll evaluate and we continue to evaluate with our team to determine where we might need to insert those cellular numbers. Our mobile collection numbers continue to drive our work. Essentially, what, you know, like I said earlier, our goal is to reduce the amount that the business is doing, make life easier for them and make the meter to cash process efficient and as we laid out contractually. We've talked a little bit about our internal team and the iterative process that Itron is going through. So we refer to that as our optimization area mitigation, our optimization process. Essentially, we break up the network. Right now there's four cycles, as I understand, in the Pearland territory. We've broken that up into eight optimization areas. Our goal there is to continue to analyze data and then make improvements based off of that data essentially. Some of the challenges that Brad and Robert mentioned again, you know, we have had some joint use agreement challenges, particularly working with CenterPoint and kind of getting the level of urgency and priority that obviously we and Robert and the city are looking for conveying that need and, and you know, helping to get that, to get that work completed. There's been some challenges there. We're, we've got some current challenges that are going on and some requests that are in, and Robert I know is, is state diligent trying to get those completed. As Brad mentioned, supply chain constraints continue to impact us both in our connected grid router space as well as the endpoint space. There, there is not a, I think we were saying earlier, there's a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel. I don't think we're seeing the end of the tunnel yet, but we are seeing some light. And we've had increased availability for, for those components. So we, we have had some CGR network outages in, in the area. That makes it slightly difficult for us to optimize. That's something that we're just continuing to work on with Robert's IT team and make sure we're optimized and essentially kind of have a backbone there to make sure everything is up and reading like it should be. So what are we doing moving forward? As I said, we're continuing with the optimization process. We've broken that up into the eight unique areas. That's driving the network improvement. Our, part of our optimization process is physically visiting sites that we expect to be reading on the network, but are not currently. Of that work, we've completed about twenty percent of those site visits. We continue to find those sites through that iterative optimization process. So there is work out there today that we don't know about. There's work that will be created by the work that is ongoing through the project and that will feed into those mitigation visits. One thing that we're looking forward to cellular endpoint installations, that's going to, like I said, fill in some of that fringe coverage and provide some, some gap fill in certain areas of the network. We are moving forward with some additional poles and network devices that our optimization and internal team have shared with Robert and team. We've passed on those requests, I believe, to CenterPoint as well. So we've got some high confidence areas that we, we want to proceed forward with additional devices. And then last but not least, we are moving forward with the acoustic leak detection and finalizing the agreement and installation plan for that work as well. I wanted to briefly bring up the previous plan that was shared and Mr. Mayor, you may have a copy of this and just wanted to acknowledge this from the last meeting in January. This, so this plan was, was what was shared. Below the blue line is, is kind of what was active and what was on the path moving forward in January. I, I've provided some updates and a little bit of clarity here. Hopefully this is a little bit easier to follow, but essentially the blue shaded areas or items that we have completed. The red shaded areas are items that we have not completed. And within those red items, you can see there are some partial completions percentages there. So a couple of dates that have adjusted, you know, our, our project close, we had proposed end of November, we're pushing that to end of December. We recognize that that's a risk. We understand that, you know, the challenges that we've discussed today could potentially, you know, put that date at risk, but we're, we're moving forward with our plan that we're confident in. We're moving forward with our optimization that we know is going to get us the results that this plan is calling for. So most importantly, you know, like I, I've been talking about the mitigation and optimization that's ongoing. That's going to continue to drive the other pieces of the plan and, and kind of reaffirm our network connectivity and the, the end goal here, which Robert stated is ninety-nine percent RF coverage and ninety-five percent read rate of those ninety-nine. Believe I've covered everything. I'm sure you've got some questions. Hopefully I didn't go too fast.
It's just, you know, obviously it's highly technical, you know. You know, truly drinking from a fire hose when it comes to the technical side of this, it's complicated. And I think we recognize this, just by way, I've, I requested this to be on the agenda. Clearly, a month ago, we voted to collapse the thirty-two thirty plan. He, albeit a month or so sooner than it was going to end on its own, obviously one cycle, several months. Getting it, getting it closed out, which naturally brought to where are we on the complete implementation of AMI? Obviously the schedule is, is continuing to be a challenge. And so wanted to, wanted to hear from you guys here, you know, in the room, being able to, to give us an update. You know, it, it, it's concerning just because, and I think I told you this, you know, in our meeting, that there's always that project, that it doesn't matter what you do, something's going to go wrong. Apparently for you guys, that's us. It is what it is at this point. Our goal, obviously, we got to get it completed. Talk about all the other stuff and blame and, you know, we can, we can go there. But we got to get it completed. Obviously, the schedule is going longer. It's not going shorter. Was hoping we could get shorter. Cause it's, it's our goal. We need to turn the corner. We have got to turn a corner on water billing. We have got to have successes there. And, and this is a critical component of it. Yeah, we can still go out and read meters. We can still go out and do all that. But we can't get to some of the tools that we'd like to get to like Water Smart and other things until this is done.
Showing the value to your customers.
Yeah. And, and, and they've heard about it. They're proud of hearing about it.
Absolutely.
They want it done. And I see the challenges here and I, and I, I agree. COVID has been a challenge for everybody. Chips have been a challenge for everybody. Supply chain has been a challenge for everybody. You go back to Robert's original end date that was in your proposal, February twenty twenty. That was before COVID. That was before chips. That was before supply chain. Now we have to deal with all of this because someone putting their proposal together didn't anticipate all the issues that they would see here. I believe in our meeting, y'all, I mean, you said, yep, we picked the bat, you know, we, the, the meter company, that meter installer, they couldn't scale up. And that's really, I, I, when I walked away from that meeting, that by itself probably put us to where we are today. Had you had a different meter company or more or whatever, could have scaled up. I guess I just don't understand is why, why and how we didn't react sooner to all of that. Obviously COVID was, nobody knew that was coming. Had COVID not hit, would we be here today? Would we be done? I don't know. I think it exacerbated the problem. But it, it, what it does, anytime we start talking about AMI, we talk about the meters, we talk about this. I'm telling you, people outside this building, they don't think it's going to work. They just flat out don't think it's going to work. There's no confidence in it because we haven't completed it. And according to the schedule, we're three plus years behind or whatever it is. It's not quite three years behind. We're eight hundred and
I think it's fair to round up.
By the time we get to December, we'll be three years behind. And so, and I, I think that, you know, is how does Itron and, and I, and I, and I do appreciate, and I, and I said this in our meeting in January. I appreciate you standing in the room and saying, it's on us. We're here today. We got to fix this. We got to move on. A lot of people don't do that. They, they do all this and point fingers and everything else. Somebody to stand up and say, nope, we're going to complete this. I appreciate that. I said that in the meeting. I said that in the meeting, I'm going to say it publicly tonight. I appreciate you standing here tonight and saying, we're going to get this right, we're going to complete this job. A lot of people who wouldn't do that. I appreciate that. But I need Itron to help us in stealing confidence in this system. Because all I heard, not being a technical wonk, when it comes to all that, I just, I just heard problem after problem after problem after problem after problem. And when people go to read, the only thing they care about, a couple of things, when they open their bill, they just want it to be accurate. Obviously, they want it cheaper, but they want it to be accurate. And, and, and I've got to, I've got to have enough confidence in the system that we're building across this community, that it's going to be accurate. And I, and I know, I said this in your, in, in the meeting, that when it comes to this type of an install and these types of meters, I mean, you guys did two and a half million meters with CenterPoint on the electric side, and no doubt, had challenges with it. It's a big job, but I don't think anybody in here, when it comes to reading your meter and getting your electric bill, do you question the accuracy? It's there. So I know Itron can perform. I just need to make sure that we have help in convincing them that it's going to be accurate. And, and we turned the corner. And so I, you know, one problem has led to another, which has led to another, which has exacerbated. And then the last thing, if you're having CenterPoint challenges, I'd certainly like to help you with that. We have contacts at CenterPoint, and I know staff does as well, but we have, we have contacts that are, we're supposed to bring them challenges. And so if we're having a challenge on getting some of our poles and electricity and those types of things, I would, I would welcome that list, so we can activate on our end what we need to do to help you get power to those poles, get what's necessary to those poles, so we can get those sooner rather than later. And again, I didn't, I didn't want to come in here and just have that kind of a, a meeting, but I wanted to hear from you guys where we are. Do you feel confident in this December 16 date? I mean, again, I, I get it, there's supply chain issues. Do you feel confident in that date?
As, as Justin said, that date's a risk. We have the supply chain issues. CGRs are part and parcel of the supply chain. Endpoints, the cellular endpoints that he talks about, supply chain. So that those are absolute risks and have caused the project to shift to the right. But let's make sure, and I want to help you win over the constituency here. You're reading 50% of the meters with this AMI system. It works end to end. So the system works. What we're working on now is coverage and then reliability, right? So to make it a, a, a read that we can feel confident is going to be there 95% of the time. That's what we're working on, and that's what this new firmware is. So much like you have your cell phone, you might put it on the, the nightstand tonight, and you'll get new firmware downloaded onto that cell phone. That's what we do with these endpoints. We are pushing firmware over the air to the endpoints, and it's a little harder than just a cell phone because there's no electricity to it. It operates on a battery for 20 years. So technology is, is pretty significant here, and so we have to work with that technology. We can't rush things. We can't push the firmware faster. As much as I'd like it, quite frankly, as much as my executives would like, right? To get this done behind us faster is in everybody's interest. But unfortunately, we, we, the tools that we have and the hardware that we have is, is the best we can do at this point in time. What we try to do with Robert and team is make sure they're aware of that as it happens. And I'm here telling you tonight, the supply chain issues, and we thought 12 months ago that it would be over by the end of, end of last year. And here we are, still having the same discussions with our vendors. And our vendors, vendors, and quite frankly, our CEO has met with, with chip providers to let them know what our demand is, but it doesn't unfortunately move the needle for folks at this level of, of, of need. So again, I don't want to sound like an apologist, I want you to understand what we're working on, and, and we'll continue to do that. As I said, I've been with Itron for 24 years, and we have never walked away from a customer, never walked away. And I've been in our service and delivery organization that entire time. We have no intention of walking away from you folks. We will make the project a success, and we have a lasting relationship.
I appreciate that. I do want to make available for council to ask any questions they may have.
I have a question for Mr. Upton. You, you mentioned several times, and I think actually it was even in their presentation, seven day read. What is, what is, why are we doing seven day reads?
It says, seven day read rate is a gauge that Itron uses to show success of connectivity of that meter. So the meter reads every eight hours. So when we take a look at the endpoint, and if it's in the network, since it reads data every hour on the hour, so three times a day, it downloads the previous eight hours, and then uploads that to the network, uploads it then to utility billing, and then eventually it'll be partnered and paired with on WaterSmart so that you can see that read. So they use that read over a seven day period to determine that they are making that success. And so that's what, that's what that is. It's a gauge tool for, for Itron to meet their contract obligations.
And it's accurate, and it's working, and it's working across the board. It's not, even the 97%, it just wasn't good enough. We got to get to 100%.
Right.
I appreciate that. Anybody else have any questions, comments on this? Remember Camp Car?
Can we pull up the service map that has the regions on it, the cycles?
The full?
Yeah, the one that had the green and the blue, or the green and the red little dots.
This one, sir?
That work? Is there a particular reason why there's just more red dots way on the right side? Is there like something funny in the air? I guess I, I have not delved in this more than others. But what, what, is there, is it the highway at 288? I mean, what, what's going on there?
That was part of their whole thing, of one cycle to the next cycle to, they've been starting west, moving east.
So Council, so Councilman Camp Car, let me just go ahead and dive in. Thank you, Mayor, for that. Is that, when I showed it, is that cycle 14 is west of 288, cycle 13 is basically between Cullen and 288, cycle 12, and then cycle 11 is east of 35. And so we had picked certain areas when we were testing out the CGRs and doing specific, what is called high confidence areas. That's why you have some green over in cycles 11 and 12, to make sure we are showing almost 100% connectivity in that area that they talked about in our routes. And so with that, we went back and said, let's, you know, we went and decided to do all of cycle 14 and all of cycle 13, thinking that we can produce forward. And then when we had some challenges on being successful for our readings, for our billing, we stopped and said, we're having challenges. Itron stepped up and helped us and sent us a third reader at their own expense so that we can have three gentlemen out, three techs out doing reads on those specific dates because it takes longer to read a meter in the network mode when you're having to do drive by. So we have three individuals that will do that in those, those cycles where normally would only take one or two individuals to do an entire cycle in the old system.
I know you're not this Massey, but what was the area that was sensitive, the one that was cycle was most out of whack with the guard street water billing? What was it? It was, it was in one of the...
Well, you, you, you mean behind?
Yeah, what was, yeah.
Well, cycle, cycle 14 was the furthest behind.
Got it.
Right, yes. Grew to be the furthest behind.
All right. So we're 50%, like two years behind. We have a CenterPoint issue, and now a chips issue, and...
No. Oh, sorry.
Tell us how you really feel, Robert. Yeah, I'm just talking out here. I, I just, I'm trying to understand, like globally, like where are we? We're, we're not 50%, we're 48%. But we're, we're putting in the slides that we're having CenterPoint concerns, chip concerns, and other concerns. Are we going to get to 52, to the mayor's point, in less than six months or five months, whatever it is?
Councilman Camp Car, real quick on, with regards to the CenterPoint, I wanted to get that on with that, with you, Mayor, as well. As we are working with CenterPoint well, what we're running into challenges is scheduling their work based off of their crews to be able to install power to the poles. All of, working with permits, everything is green tagged, we're ready to go, but they have a longer lead time, and we've been talking to our direct reps all the way up to the top to get power. We're down to two locations. It's just the work availability with their crews and their, and they know it's important, but that's our issue.
Especially with the sensitivity around the grid and other things. I hear, I just, I, I kind of agree with the mayor's assessment. It's a, it's a sticky wicket. Being real charitable, I would go closer to something less charitable is my natural inclination, but I'm trying to be nicer. But it just, this is two years behind, and we're still halfway. I mean, I think another two years seems a lot more apropos. And then I think there's a confidence issue. The biggest critic of the city is sitting in this room, waiting to go throw all the darts at us on this issue. And I think that they're fairly thrown, to be honest with you. You know, even if it works, do we know that it's reliable? And can we have a confidence in it? And the answer I keep hearing is, well, maybe the firmware works, and maybe this will solve it. Like, there's not, I feel like we got that Samsung dryer that's breaking versus the old Maytag, and the old Maytag, just the tank and it works. It's not sexy. I almost want the old Maytag, because at least I know it works.
Well, the, and I'll, I'll, I'll say the confidence that I have in looking at this, when you see the whole city, we're at 48%. I guess the question would ultimately be, have you, have you figured out the firmware? Have you figured out that issue? And so, for example, where were we in cycle 14 two months ago? You know, it, like currently, it's at, what, 66 or 68%? Where were we two months ago? I mean, if, if we were sitting at 60, I agree with you. If we were sitting at 40 or 32, then it's, then we're seeing, then we're seeing a change. And I guess that's really the question is, and I, because I know the whole system across the, the city, we're 48%, and I knew we stalled, but have we fixed that? And have we seen a massive change in 14 in the last two weeks, two months, month, whatever? And if we have, then I have confidence that it's, it's gaining speed. But to your point, if it was at 60 two months ago...
You feel different.
Yeah. Then, then we have issues.
We're at this threshold, how much has been, can we pull the screen with the money that we've paid in? And we're, we're like...
Roughly a million, what, five outstanding?
Are, are we hitting, I have a funny feeling for you guys, this is already a loss leader, and you're probably having to write this all off and do this, but are we at like a point where like the economics of finishing this just doesn't work, or expeditiously doesn't work?
No.
Okay. We have you on the...
Sorry.
We have, you know, the cellular endpoint that will help fill in the gap. So really, what we're trying to do is you hear about this firmware, MR1, that is, it's been tried and tested here, and it's active at other customers. It works, we've demonstrated it, we've started pushing it to all of the other meters that communicate, so we're ahead of that. Now, we just got to change them, move them to the network. So there, when we build out the network, it happens in two flavors. One is when you put up a reader, it reads many endpoints. One CGR reads many endpoints. That's step one. But some endpoints that are in individual properties, maybe it's under bushes, it's under a different type of lid, we have to mitigate an individual property. So while you look at these incremental steps and you say, you know, 1% since last time, we look at it and say, what type of 1% was that? Was that field visits and folks figuring out that the endpoint that was supposed to be affixed to the lid was in the bottom of the pit, and get it back up there and re-affix it? Was, is it a pit that's flooded with water now, and we call it to the attention of Robert's team and say, hey, there's a leak here that needs to be addressed, or there's drainage problems? That's the type of work we do. It's not just macro, it truly is micro, and we go to each and every meter. So yes, I understand from your perspective, it is slow, it is onerous, but that's the way these systems are built. I was the manager of the CenterPoint project, a couple million meters over seven states.
Well, I, I agree with the mayor.
We'll get there. I, I know, I, I'm trying to build the confidence that you want to hear.
This next time. I appreciate you coming to be a pinata. I mean, there are not a lot of people that want to come in here and eat their hat and, and their pride, and I think that's hard. I would tell, my only vantage point is, there is a ton of scrutiny on this. Artificial deadlines are not beneficial to you. Just do the damn thing as long as, as slow as it takes, because the reality is, accuracy is what matters here. Arbitrary deadlines, as much as it would make me feel good to have it done by the end of this month, we have a lot of people who would more than happy to pillory all of us and everybody on, on that side for more inaccuracy, for, for issues around billing, and it's not worth it. Just...
Fair enough. And you, so I know you manage projects, I can hear it in your voices, and there's this, this tendency that some people like to take their foot off the accelerator to, to address that and say, well, let's just move the finish date out to March, or move it out to next year. And that, from my perspective and managing many, many of these projects, does us no good. We have to keep the bar high. We have to keep people focused on urgency and moving quickly. And if we succumb to these challenges and we don't keep the bar high, they just keep on coming, and we don't go fast. So that's why you hear it, that's why we're not backing away from, hey, we're putting it out there, we're challenging our team, Robert's team, the folks at CenterPoint, we want this done in December, and we're going to do our darndest to get there.
I appreciate that. Anyone else? You got anything? All right. Well, as I, again, as Mr. Camp Car said, it's not, it's not always easy being the pincushion, and we appreciate that, really do, because it helps. It helps an understanding that it's not just put up a pole and this stuff, you know, starts working. It, it's a complicated issue. Glad to hear you're dedicated to completing this, want to hear that, thank you for that. And I think you also heard, we want accuracy, we want it right, we want confidence in, in the, in the system. Yeah, I'd like to have it tomorrow, but also, I'd rather have it accurate. If that means a few months, I want it accurate. We can, and again, we can talk about the other stuff and why we got here, but we're here. We have to complete this and get across the finish line. We're certainly dedicated to, you know, doing that. We want to do that as expeditiously as possible, but with accuracy. So I appreciate you guys for coming in tonight, having the opportunity to discuss this with council. Good update. Clearly, there's a lot of moving parts, and we'll get this across the finish line eventually and move on. Appreciate you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you all. Oh, Member Cade, you had something real quick?
Yes, Mayor. I'm moved to reconsider the postponement of consent agenda, item B.
We have a motion and a second to reconsider consent agenda, item B, and we have a motion and a second. So I think with that, there's not debatable, we just vote on it, is that right, Lawrence?
Let me double check, because that's a motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider, I think it's not debatable, we just vote on it. Just want to make sure. Yeah. Just not debatable, we vote on the motion to reconsider. So we have a motion to reconsider, item B, that is, consideration for possible action resolution number R2022 dash 157. This is the Naterium air handler replacement project that we had postponed. Madam Secretary will call for the vote on the reconsideration.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Representative Tim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Camp Car?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So now that we have...
Now that the motion to reconsider...
Say the motion again?
The original motion, oh, it was only one motion, I guess.
Original motion was a postponement. So Member Cade, would you place item B on the table for discussion?
Yes, consideration and possible action, resolution number R2022 dash 157, so moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. We've had the staff report, so I'll turn it back to Member Cade for the reason for doing that.
Okay, thank you. I, I wanted to ask a question about this. Superintendent Berger mentioned their contract. Um, Superintendent Berger mentioned their contract, um, the Pearland ISD contract. Do we have a reasonable assumption that they are going to continue their contract with us?
Yeah, I really, I mean, they are, we've have many discussions and, uh, you know, they may not love every clause of it, just like we don't on our side, but it is a deal and, um, you know, when we talked about modifying it to, uh, go to our renter mode instead of a partner mode, they like the partner mode better. So I think there's no reason, they've, they've got a swim team that relies upon it and so they're, they're in there for the 10 years. So we'll talk to them about, one thought I had earlier was, uh, we should talk to them about the financing, just like we're, we're going to finance the improvements that are necessary, so we should give them the same courtesy, but that's down the road a little bit.
That's really what I wanted to ask, and I was thinking about the timeliness of this, considering school's about to start and they, they do use the Naterium and this is a maintenance that, that's needed, so I, that's why I wanted to reopen this, thank you.
So, um, we have a motion on the floor to go ahead and consider that.
Mayor, if we could, uh, we didn't get a chance to introduce it at all, so maybe we, it would help.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we, that's right, we didn't really do the full staff report on it.
So if I could maybe ask Trent just to give us some of the background and talk about why we're here and then I'll add a little bit more after that.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Pearson. Um, if you recall from our earlier conversation about the recreation center and auditorium, uh, we had that one slide with a long list of, of repair cost on there. The bulk of those are the system we're looking to replace here, the Dektron system. Um, that system has, uh, had issues throughout, um, from very early, um, after we, we opened the building, probably three to four years in, and has, has had significant issues since then. Um, it's currently operating at, I believe, 75% of its capacity and, um, we've continually had coils and other components of it go out. They're very expensive to repair. It's on the older refrigerant, um, and it takes, um, a significant amount of refrigerant. So each time we, we lose refrigerant when a coil blows, um, it's very, very expensive to, to replace those, so, um, and that unit, um, running basically 24/7 for those, uh, the years we have been open is, is at the end of its expected life or beyond that. So, um, you know, moving this forward so we can get the design started, um, get towards bidding a replacement of that is, is definitely needed and, and necessary so that we don't, um, see continued, uh, failures of that system or some failure where we can't, you know, fix it and we've got to come in with a temporary system.
So just to add, Mayor, I just, as you saw, this was part of the building evaluation, it's fundamental to the operation of the building and not trying to be a scaremonger, but you know, it, this is, the, the design is, starts that process, gives you the numbers so you can get that going. So just want to make sure you're aware of that. If you decide to still postpone for several weeks, that's your call, but at least you know the, the other side of it.
Right. All right, so we have a motion and a second to, to consider this. We've heard the staff report. Any other questions, comments from council?
I'm fine voting. It's my understanding, oh, sorry. My understanding that, uh, thinking back in the memo, I had a chance to think about that, that, um, if we did decide, I mean, I don't think that we're going to terminate the agreement with Pearland ISD. We've got 10 years remaining. If we did reconsider, we'd have to pay back a substantial amount of money, it's my understanding. Um, so I kind of see this as, you know, if, if they're still in it to do the cost share moving forward, if it's something that, you know, absolutely needs to be done. I don't see things changing over the next 10 years. Um, so I'm, I'm fine with, uh, moving on this tonight.
Mayor, I think we had a robust discussion about, do we really want to continue to be on this? I think the city manager brought up, do we want to be a renter or do we want to be a partner? Um, I think we should have that discussion prior to committing more dollars. I hear the emergency nature of some of this, but this is only designed and bid. This actually isn't going to go and improve anything tomorrow. I think it's going to be constructed tomorrow. Um, you know, if there is going to be a malfunction in the next 30 days, it is going to happen regardless of how this is dispensed tonight. Um, I think the citizens and all of us in the budget workshop and in the hearings, if we're going to commit to $6 million, let's do that eyes open. Um, what has consistently happened, at least in my time here, is where you already started spending this money, why would you stop now? And that is a tried and true technique. I appreciate it from somebody who's trying to move the ball, but, um, we don't need to commit dollars. I would at least like us to have a robust discussion prior to that. That's all I'm asking for is for us to be able to have the discussion, not to go commit dollars that we may not end up wanting to commit. So I'm going to make the motion, uh, to postpone, uh, as originally had.
There may be more discussion, I just.
Any other discussion?
So 6 million, I want to be sure, like, the only alternative, I've, I've said this a couple of times, kind of half-heartedly joking, like knock it down and build a new one, is, that's the only other thing I can think of and that's going to be more than 6 million, is what I was.
Maybe, maybe the school district would knock it down and, and pay to build a new one. Uh, I mean, we had a robust discussion here that we're at 37% effective, uh, I can't remember, I mean, it's seven hours ago, but our membership levels.
We're at 56.
Yeah, we're at 56, sorry, we were at 37 last year on membership, we're way behind. If we're just going to say, we just want to be a renter, let's just be a renter and go from there, but we aren't even having that discussion yet, but we're already, we're going to sink another $300,000 into this.
I mean, the time for the robust discussion was at 5 o'clock today and nobody said anything about changing anything.
I think Member Barry wasn't excited about putting the 6 million dollars in if I.
Yeah, nobody's excited about it, but, but we're, we're locked into a contract for the next 10 years with another party and we've had issue after issue on the Naterium. I think we even had, have some EMS calls from heat exhaustion at the place, so, I mean, there was no part of that discussion that says, let's go look at doing this, doing that. What's going to change over the next few weeks?
I, I think we're going to go through a major discussion on the budget cycle as we were entering. I would at least like us to have some time to breathe on this. I don't know that that's unreasonable.
So I, I understand what you're saying, but this particular item is a singular item. It's not one particular item that's covering many different projects or a scope of work. Am I correct?
I mentioned that this is part of the 6 million.
It's, it's the first line item in, in the two of the 3.2 or whatever it was.
It's real money, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, it is real money and, and I don't like it either, but I don't think that, you know, we have memberships and we have people associated with that. I, I'm not willing to risk that, you know, and, and make the city look bad because we chose not to maintain our building that we're subsidizing by 25% or supposedly by 25%, you know, but we need to give them a, we need to give them a safe, healthy place to go and do their exercise and whatever it is they're going to do there. That's just my take on it. I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of this, I have no question voting on it tonight. I'm, I'm ready to move forward with it and Saturday, I guarantee you, we are going to definitely have a conversation about budgetary items and where we spend our money. We'll break that down a little bit more into more detail, but I don't think that we can sacrifice this one item for the sake of saying, hey, we saved $324,000, but oh, by the way, you're going to have to work without any heater or do humidifier or something along those lines.
I, I agree with everything you said, but this actually isn't an emergency repair. It's actually, if there's going to be a breakdown, this getting approved tonight or not getting approved tonight, isn't going to change that. This is just a design contract for 324,000 dollars to design this system. So nobody's, nobody's ill affected yet. We had a, a motion to postpone, it was approved 7-0, we unwound it. Just in the sense of decorum, I would ask, can we at least, if you guys want to do one, one meeting, let's do one meeting, but if we're going to say we want to be on the hook for 6 million, the first part is us saying, well, we're going to do 3 million, we're going to start here, and then we've spent the three, the 300,000 and now we're going to look stupid. I mean, that's going to be the argument back to us.
So let me ask this question, and I agree, it's not an emergency measure, it's not out today. Are we, are we not going to replace a system that we know is failing? Are we not?
Is this the air quality system?
Well, I, no, I, I'm, are we not going to maintain our building? Are we not going to replace a system that we know needs to be replaced? Does it need to be replaced today? No. Does it need to be replaced in the next couple of years? Yes. Are we not going to do that? Forget renting, forget selling, forget this, forget all that. City Pearland owns the building. We pay for it. We pay the bonds on it. Are we going to, are we going to replace the system? If the answer is yes, we got to design it, whether it's tonight or in two weeks or next month, we got to design it. That's the way I see it. And nobody likes it. Trust me, go replace your roof on your house. Nobody likes writing that check, right? Nobody. Nobody likes replacing an AC unit in their house. I got two kids that just replaced AC units in their house. Trust me, they did not like writing those checks, but it was necessary because that's what we need to do. And I, I guess that's the point. I don't know what we gain by waiting two weeks.
All right. To respond, I, I think, Mayor, if we have a robust discussion that being owners to the point, partners, 50/50 partners on this is not in the best interest of the city, whether we own it or not, or we have to maintain it or not, I think it starts lending us down the path of what are we going to do to minimize the damage? Right now, we, we have a, a presentation saying that we lose money on this item. Sometimes it's $200,000 a year, sometimes $800,000 a year, not significant, those significant expenses, we're talking just regular operations. Um, in some years, that's a quarter penny on the tax rate. Some years it's three quarters or a penny. Um, if we are going to go and do $324,000 with the intent to go to a $3 million upgrade, I'd like to have a more robust discussion about like, is that the long-term plan? And right now, we're not having that robust discussion.
And I hear that, and I, and, and that $3 million is actually a million and a half.
Mayor, may I ask, is, for this particular item, there's no, I guess, question that the ISD isn't contractually obligated at this point? I mean, we're not discussing whether or not that's going to change.
You heard the superintendent tonight, we don't like the, the sticker shock of it, but it is what it is.
Right, yeah, we, we've got a durable agreement in place, it's not.
Agreement's an agreement, yeah, I mean.
Okay. So why don't you let him put his motion up and see if he gets a second.
That's where I was coming back, out of, out of, out of courtesy, I've come back to the.
I think we, uh, we kind of have game plan, kind of roll with it, and then, uh, we change in it and, uh, it's fine, I'll put the motion, we'll let it die for a second, but I'd like to postpone this item till the, uh, meeting with the second budget reading, um, as previously done earlier this evening.
We have a motion to postpone. Hearing no second, we're back to the main motion. Any other questions, comments on the main motion as presented?
Sometimes you need a second, sometimes you need a second, that's all I'm saying.
Seeing no other questions, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Tim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
No.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passes 6 to 1.
All right, with that, we will. Any other reconsiderations? Just looking. Here we go. All right, with that, I'm deaf, I'm not going to hear anymore. Uh, moving to adjournment at 11:29.
About an hour ago. Hey, virtual campers, my name is Mary Kate Lord and our camp at home series this week is Hawaiian Hula Ball. Try saying that three times fast. So we are making a sunrise surprise. With anything Hawaiian or Lululemon theme, you're going to want to tie in some citrus. For us, we're going to use some orange juice concentrate, a little bit frozen. Uh, we also have our vanilla extract, smells great, tastes horrible ice, just a warning. 2% milk, uh, about a cup and a half of ice, and for our honey or our sugar, it's either or. So we're going to use for ours, about a half a cup of sugar. If you're going to use honey, you only need to use about a fourth of a cup. So, let's get started! All right, so the first step is that we are going to blend our milk and our vanilla. Since we have a blender, mixing it is awesome, but I want to touch on the fact of 2% milk. So the consistency of the smoothie depends on a lot of the ingredients. Some of it does depend on the milk. So if you have skim milk and whole milk, just mix them evenly and you'll have 2% milk. Um, if you are lactose intolerant and you want to use an almond milk or any kind of,